Good evening, everyone.
Welcome to the council meeting of Wyndham City Council this Tuesday, the 27th of April 2021. A warm welcome to everyone here this evening. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Coolan Nation as the traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Please stand for the opening prayer and welcome.
We pray for guidance in the council's decision making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham.
I would like to welcome the members of the gallery. Tonight is the first night since February 2020 that we have been able to open our gallery for an OCM. So, welcome to the gallery. Councillors and of course all staff in attendance, welcome this evening. This meeting is being recorded and live streamed on the internet. The recording will be archived and made available on council's website. Councillors, this evening, item two on the agenda is apologies and requests for leave of absence. Madam Acting CEO, do we have any apologies or requests of leave this evening?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillors, declaration of conflicts of interest or disclosure of conflicts of interest, conflicting personal items in any interest, in any item of the agenda. Councillors, does anyone have a conflict of interest they wish to declare? councillor Barera.
Madam Mayor, I have a conflict at item 6.2.1. Two of the items within that points one and four.
Item points one and four, also 6.3.2 and 6.5.2. Thank you. Councillor Zatkowski?
I have a general conflict of interest on item 6.2.1, item three.
Thank you very much. councillor Marcus?
And I have two conflicts of interest in the proposed annual budget, 6.2.1. In the recommendation, item one and item two. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any other councillors? No worries. Item four is confirmation of the previous minutes. That the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of March, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Maynard, seconda? Councillor Zatkowski, all those in favour? Against the item is carried, thank you. Item five, deputations and presentations, there are nil. Councillors, I just wish to make the following remarks at this point. On behalf of my fellow councillors, the acting CEO and all Wyndham council staff, I would like to send my condolences to the family and friends of former councillor Glenn Clark, who passed away recently. Mr Clark served the South West Ward from 1980 to 1988, serving alongside six different mayors, including our first female mayor, Pat Goodwin. Glenn proudly carried forward the tradition of service, bringing talent, knowledge and attentiveness to his work. With a strong commitment to equal opportunity, Glenn served as vice chairperson of the Wyndham Disability Action Group, fostering a more inclusive society and demonstrating that what we can accomplish when we work collectively together towards justice, equality and a better future for every one of us. I think all councillors this evening will join me to say that public service is a calling, it speaks to our sense of shared values and reflects our drive to serve a cause beyond our own, to give back to our community and strengthen its promise. Glenn Clark embodied this calling and his legacy was well and will be well remembered. The other item I wish to discuss this evening is the deferring of notice of motion 606 in regards to the Trugana Library. Councillor Hill has today advised me that she would like to defer this notice of motion listed in tonight's agenda at item 7.6 to the meeting to be held on the 25th of May. Therefore, item 7.6 will be withdrawn from tonight's agenda. Item six is councillors' reports, 6.1 petitions. Madam Acting CEO, I believe there is a new petition this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 19th of April, council received a petition from 25 people addressed, and the petition states as follows in the agenda. The parking and safety of kids has become a major concern at Trugana Peter Nine College and many other schools across Wyndham City. Parents struggle to pick up and drop off kids safely due to shortage of parking facilities and supervisors. Also, the residents near the school zone are highly inconvenienced due to high traffic and their nature strips getting damaged. Therefore, the petition is hereby requests that Wyndham City to work with local schools to urgently address this issue. Having dedicated pick up and drop off zones, one-way streets during school hours or staged school start or finish times may be considered. Madam Mayor, council notes the petition and will prepare a report to respond to this at the next council meeting on the 25th of May.
Thank you, Madam Acting CEO. Item 6.1.1, response to the petition 0121, extend the bus route 441. The report is on pages eight to 11, the recommendations on page eight. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Maynard, secondas? councillor councillor Ramesh? councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Oh, Madam Mayor, you know, suffice to say that the recommendation is to note and proceed with the letter to the minister.
councillor Maynard, can you please move the mic? Thank you.
Sorry, have it. Just to note that, as indicated in the recommendation that we write to the minister on behalf of the residents, but I'd just like to congratulate the residents on taking the time to do the petition and the lead petitioner, Lee Mulbar.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against the item is carried. Item 6.2.1, proposed annual plan and budget. The report is on pages 12 to 22, the recommendations on pages 13 to 16, with the attachments on pages 23 to 144.
Move. I'd like to move it, thank you.
Can, that's fine. I was just about to say, I'd like to break it up into five different motions this evening due to the conflicts of interest. So, you're happy to move the first of those ones?
Yes.
Yes. No worries. So, the order for all councillors, the order will be heard, that first four points will be heard separately and then we'll have points five to 22. So, the first motion will be that point number four will be heard first and then points one, two and three will be heard separately, but in that order. So councillor Shaw is the mover of the first motion. The first motion being that councillor Barera has declared a conflict of interest. The following capital projects be accepted as part of the proposed annual budget and councillor Barera will be leaving for this item. So councillor Shaw. Point four is where councillor Barera has declared a conflict. The following capital projects be accepted as part of the proposed annual budget, a plan and budget for 2122, being the building asset renewal programme in the Werribee Library Community Hub. I have councillor Shaw as the mover. Councillors, do I have a seconda? councillor Maynard. Councillors, are there anyone would like to speak to this motion? councillor Shaw?
No.
Anyone else? No, that's fine. Councillors, I now put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against the item is carried. Councillor Barera has also declared a conflict of interest for point one of the recommendation and will remain outside the chamber whilst other councillors vote on the next item. Councillor Marcus has also declared a conflict of interest on this item, which is point one of the recommendation. I'll now ask councillor Marcus to leave the chamber. Councillors, do I have a mover for point one of the recommendation? That is, council to resolve, where councillor Marcus and councillor Barera have declared a conflict of interest. The following capital projects be accepted as part of the annual budget and that's. councillor Maynard, do I have a seconda? councillor Shaw. Councillors, anyone wish to speak to this item? Not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against the motion is carried. Can we please call councillor Barera back in? Thank you. Councillor Marcus has declared a conflict of interest of item, point two of the recommendation and will remain outside the chamber whilst the other councillors vote on this item. Councillors, do I have a mover for point two of the recommendation, which is in regards to the Wyndham Cultural Centre redevelopment? councillor Shaw? Second, do I have a seconda? councillor Maynard. Councillors, wish to speak on this item?
I'll say a few words.
Thanks councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is absolutely fantastic, this the cultural redevelopment of the redevelopment of our cultural centre. 20 years, our current cultural centre has been there and for many residents who grew up here, remember it as St Tenry Hall, of course, and then has now turned into the cultural centre. It's been a great development for Wyndham, but obviously with our growth and in terms of supporting our arts and cultural communities, starting work on what that could actually look like for something for the next 20 years is actually really important. So, looking forward to seeing this project develop and looking forward to seeing any feedback on that from people out there, if they're looking at the budget and going to give some community feedback. It'd be great to see what your feedback is on the cultural redevelopment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? councillor Gilligan?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, given councillor Shaw's remarks, I guess I would put on the public record my concerns about the quantum of funding that is proposed for this particular project, particularly given that it could be the case that some $20 to $25 million worth of rate payer funds will be required for the ultimate development of this project as opposed to state and Commonwealth contributions. There's not enough, in fact, there's none coming from the Commonwealth government and we have a collective responsibility to be asking why it is that people pay so much in terms of taxation on a federal and state level and whether they're getting particularly from the Commonwealth their fair share of distribution on a project like this one. So, I do have concerns about the overall funding mix that's required for this project. I do appreciate that the state government has provided $3 million from the growing suburbs fund, but that simply isn't enough in terms of the expectation that I have around the ultimate funding mix that's necessary for a project of this significance. There's no doubt that this project will be important to revitalising and enhancing the arts and culture precinct of our city, but we do have to get better at not owning all the responsibility for these types of projects and that there is a fairer distribution to support not only us at council, but rate payers, most importantly, who foot the burden of projects of this size that, you know, in other areas, be it Ballarat, Bendigo or Geelong, seem to be getting a fairer share of those state and federal parts. So, that's my contribution. Thank you, madam.
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, madam. Thank you, madam mayor. I too have concerns about the funding element, not in principle about the cultural centre, but how it will be funded and what that looks like in relation to the budget for the whole of the municipality. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. Anyone else wish to make a contribution? councillor Mufford?
Thank you, madam mayor. I was going to speak on this item further on in our agenda. We are discussing this further on with some grant funding that we have received. But this is a project that I believe personally is well overdue. Yeah, it does have a big price tag and it is something that can make some people stop and think, you know, should we be spending this much money? When you look at how much we spend across the municipality, look at how much we spend on roads, of course, that's vital infrastructure. You look at how much we spend on sports, of course, that's vital again for an active, healthy community. But arts, I think, is really lacking substantial funding and arts needs a real big kick. And I think this is a bit of a kickstart. This is what our arts community is calling out for. This is our one and only cultural centre that services a lot of our arts, our performing arts, our our static arts, our visual arts. It's something that really needs that. You take anyone upstairs to that small art gallery and they'll just see how poor that space is. It's a great space for what it's utilized for, but it's such a small space. So, we need a larger art gallery. We need more, we need more, we need an increased we need increased box office, we need the visual impact of the outside of the building. It needs to be enhanced. It's a very old and tired building. So, I think it's about time that we kick some considerable money into it. So, I'm fully supporting this part of the budget. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Mufford. councillor Barera?
Thank you, madam mayor. Like councillor Shaw and councillor Mufford, I don't have a lot to add. I was also going to speak to it later and I still will, but I'm also in favour of this and I'll be voting for it.
Thank you councillor Barera. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Councillor Zatkowski has declared a conflict in point three of the recommendation. So, I ask him to leave and I'll ask councillor Marcus to come back in. Thank you councillor Marcus. councillor Zatowski has declared a conflict of interest in the following capital works project, which is the Grange Reserve Pitch. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Shaw, sorry, Ramesh? Do I have a seconda? councillor Mufford? councillor Shaw, councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak to this item?
No, thank you.
Sorry. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against the item is carried. Sorry about that. I think I'm cold. Can we call councillor Zatkowski back in, please? Thank you. Councillors, we will now consider the remaining parts of the recommendations being points five to 22. Councillors, do I have a mover for the points five to 22 of the recommendation? councillor Maynard, do I have a seconda? councillor Hill? councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, madam mayor, I do. I was speaking in support of the proposed 2122 annual plan and budget to go out on public exhibition. The impacts and uncertainties surrounding COVID-19 are still present, as emphasised in the recent snap lockdowns in Queensland and Western Australia. This budget has been prepared with the focus on recovery and reactivation. Our resources are being directed to continue to support our community through what is hopefully a recovery phase from COVID and ensuring our collective resilience. Our approach to this budget has again been measured and balanced to ensure maximum benefit for our community. While many of our facilities have reopened, they are operating at reduced capacities. This has a negative impact on our revenues in areas such as our sport and leisure facilities and our community centres and will continue to do so for the short to medium term while the virus is still being managed. We will see increased expenditure to meet the higher demand on delivering essential services as we continue to reactivate services in line with health and safety guidelines and in accordance with our COVID protocols. The proposed budget delivers a reported net surplus of $183, 181.3 million. This includes developer contributions as well as assets that are transferred to council. It is important to highlight that both these categories create a future funding obligation for council in terms of building community infrastructure and meeting the ongoing costs of maintaining the growing asset base. And also that these assets, madam mayor, that are gifted to us, gifted, I often wonder the word, are shown as a cash item, which surprises me, but anyway, that's the accounting standard. On an underlying basis, before depreciation, the budget delivers an operating surplus of around $68.1 million. This is a significant result, given we are continuing to face extraordinary circumstances with the COVID-19 pandemic with substantial impacts on council operations. Depreciation expenses for the 202122 year is budgeted to be $110.5 million. This is an allocation of the cost of using our infrastructure assets, including our landfill operations. Importantly, it provides an indication of funding required in the future to maintain and renew these assets. As a growth council with an increasing asset base, this is a significant requirement for us and something we need to address as part of our long-term asset and financial planning, which we are. Council has applied the rate cap of 1.5% as set by the state government and the proposed Capital Works Programme this year, or this in the next financial year, of $201.5 million is a record for this council and focuses on delivering on multi-year projects, the renewal and upgrading of existing and construction of new facilities, road network improvements and new and upgraded open spaces. This is consistent with the council plan and the 2040 vision for the benefit of the community. Madam Mayor, a personal highlight for me was to see the resilience of Wyndham sporting clubs throughout COVID, led by the selfless efforts of our wonderful network of committee members and volunteers across Wyndham. And I thank each and every one of you for your service. Whilst it's been great to see strong participation numbers return to the field, pitch or court, we know that our clubs are still experiencing a range of challenges, including a shortfall of volunteers and officials and a restricted environment to generate sponsorship, given the current climate, madam mayor. To support clubs in the rebound from COVID, I am pleased to announce that councillors have successfully advocated to waive a community sporting club fees for the current winter season and upcoming summer season. This support will also include further financial support for our community sporting clubs operating from indoor facilities. Whilst 140 community sporting clubs are important now, more than ever, it's been great to see and hear about the enjoyment that everyone has had as activities have resumed from the end of last year. Finally, while we don't know how long we'll be living under the safe protocols of COVID-19, we do know that the economic recovery will continue to be a marathon rather than a sprint. Councillors are required to continue to make responsible choices and put the needs of the community first, just as I believe this proposed budget has done. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Maynard. councillor Ramesh?
Thank you, madam mayor. The council leadership team should be commended for their achievements in keeping all aspects of our city healthy during the COVID lockdown, including the financial strength of the council. And I now look forward to seeing the community benefits flow from the FY22 budget as well as as we all collectively get back on our feet. The year ahead of us is a year of growth, of investment into our future, of building bridges, both literally and metaphorically, of enhancing our mental and physical wellbeing. I strongly encourage the community to get involved, provide feedback on not only this budget, but all the planning ahead of us to help build our social capital alongside our infrastructure capital.
Thank you councillor Ramesh. Any other councillors which should speak? councillor Barera?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll also be speaking in favour of the draft annual plan and budget tonight. It's been developed following a comprehensive process of deliberation, analysis and a sound community engagement process. The city of Wyndham continues to grow and with it, demand for services and assets grow too. Balancing the demands that growth necessitates, prioritising needs and managing community expectations in a manner that's sustainable is a fine balancing act. This annual plan and budget factors in council's strategic priorities alongside community priorities gathered from feedback through the deliberative community engagement that has taken place and that will also inform a refresh of Wyndham 2040 and the development of the new council plan. This plan outlines a record investment in capital works projects of $201.5 million. This will ensure our city gets the infrastructure it needs. Rates are consistent with the average 1.5% cap set by state government. While it's pleasing to see a record spend on capital projects, it's important to highlight that there are operational aspects of this proposed budget that work towards the strengthening of community, ensuring Wyndham continues to grow in its ability to be an inclusive and a welcoming city. The budget recognises the needs of our community as we emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic, supporting our community and protecting our economy. Through this budget, council will continue to fund a range of workshops and programmes through the volunteer training calendar and the Building Blocks Leadership Programme. This will support local leaders and grassroots organisations to grow their capacity. This budget also allocates resources to continue to grow employment pathways programmes, focusing on providing tertiary placements, apprenticeships, traineeships and graduate opportunities within council. While the annual plan and budget include record investment in capital works, facilities and services, it does so in a financially sustainable and responsible way. Council's commitments can be delivered while remaining financially sustainable, as the financial statements demonstrate. This plan continues to ensure the strategic and operational management of our cultural and community facilities as well. Madam Mayor, I look forward to hearing and considering community feedback on the draft in the coming weeks.
Thank you councillor Barera. councillor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. I was pleased to see that council's proposed operating budget for 202122 actually reflects a surplus of $1.181.3 million, $181.1 million. It's important to note that this result includes gifted assets, developer contributions and capital grants, all of which are required to be treated as revenue based on accounting standards. However, these items do create future obligations for council to build and maintain assets to specific service standards in the future and impacts our need for operational expenditure as well. However, if we exclude these items from our revenue and look more closely at what we define as an underlying result, as already mentioned, council's operating position reflects a deficit of $42.4 million. For a growth council such as Wyndham, the challenges of underlying budget deficits are not new and council continues to focus on ways of managing and improving our revenue and expense outlook to ensure that we are financially sustainable going forward. It is a challenge that has confronted most councils since rate capping was introduced several years ago. In fact, rate capping has left this council with a $45 million gap, in other words, a third aquatic facility. And as I just mentioned, council's ability to generate revenue is restricted. Operating grants and user fees are largely legislated and outside of council's control. We do however continue to advocate strongly to both state and federal levels of government for funding that is more reflective of our community needs and also seeks to redress impacts we have seen in our funding mix from cost shifting in relation to various community services. Council's objective is to provide services and infrastructure that delivers public value in line with legislation and community expectations and to do this in a way that is sustainable over the longer term. And as councillor Maynard mentioned, we will be talking about some of those themes and issues in our upcoming city plan and long-term financial plan. But I did want to speak about some of the proposed items that are IRAMU ward specific. In the upcoming financial year, we have included $5 million to upgrade Old Melman Road and Rothwell Road in Little River, $107,000 to begin design for an updated drainage and wastewater treatment system for the Little River Township to improve public health, amenity and water quality in Little River. We'll be undertaking an extension to the Little River Reserve Pavilion as part of this year's $5.6 million Pavilion retrofit programme. $7 million to construct a new community centre in Werribees West. $4.6 million to construct a new integrated family centre in Manor Lakes. $800,000 to signalise the dangerous intersection of Greens Road and Haynes Road. $217,000 towards the implementation of the Wyndham Vale North Master Plan. There is a further $50,000 allocated to the design, to the upgrade of Hoppers Lane South of the freeway in the 202122 budget, in addition to the $200,000 already allocated to do that. The K Road Cliffs Master Plan and K Road itself are being planned and designed at the same time to ensure suitable drainage from the road and the car park. K Road will be upgraded as part of our 8.9 local roads reconstruction programme. K Road will be upgraded as part of our 8.9 Local Roads Reconstruction Programme and the work on the Cliffs Precinct will continue with an allocation of $1.6 million in 21/22. I'm also very pleased to see the trial of the extended operating season at Warrabee Outdoor Pool continued and that we have listened to community feedback about the pool closing in the middle of the day and this won't happen unless there is a school carnival. After the first two years, the trial was impacted by Covid. It's important that we continue to trial the extended hours and I look forward to Wyndham families and residents being able to enjoy improved access to the beautiful facility that we call our Warrabee Outdoor Pool. And finally, I want to make some comments on the next indoor facility. I welcome the funding that has been allocated to progress the development of Wyndham's next indoor facility. Aquapulse and Eagle Stadium, both welcoming 1 million visitors per year, is a clear indication of the community's engagement in indoor sport and recreation. And with Wyndham's population continuing to grow, it's critical that we now prioritise the planning and delivery of the next facility. The feasibility and concept planning is the first step in the process and community feedback will be sought. Funding has been allocated for feasibility in concept planning, but it's actually a line item, it's not a capital works budget, so it's actually part of the operational plan. I look forward to getting feedback from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillor Marcus?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In the last 50 years, we've had 276,000 people come to live in Wyndham. I came in 1969 when there were 13,000 people. So, as you can imagine, each year, and we're having 100 babies, is it a week now born? So, we certainly have a lot of work and I think over the 15 years that I've been on here, we've gone from a very small city, town, shire, to what we are today. And it certainly is a lot of work for all of our council directors and the councillors. We've gone through this process and I think that we've been very measured and looked at every area. I'm not going to go sit here and list them all tonight. I'm going to wait and hear from the people when they come back. I am very pleased that the rates are capped at 1.5 because going back in my early days, we were putting the rates up by five and six percent, which was a great burden to our residents. Also, the properties are valued now every 12 months instead of every two years, which is another impulse on many of the people. And people will see that some of their properties have risen dramatically, others have gone down in price. So, these are all the things that the council have to look at when we're doing our budgets. But what I will say, we can have all the best facilities in the world, but the most important part of this city is our people. Our people are number one. Without looking after them, we have nothing. So, it's great to have the facilities, but we need the services to go with it for all of our people, for all of our people now suffering with mental health. Every day, I sit for two or three hours in my office with people coming to me with me. They're angry, they're confused, they're anxious and these are some of the things we've got to look at. I'm very pleased, Alison, we've put more in there for our older people and today we've had other conversations. So, to me, it's about people, it's about looking after our people and I will be very happy to talk on the budget after we get all the feedback from our people. So, thank you to everybody who has been involved and I think I'm going to get my botanical garden, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Hill and councillor Gilligan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank the officers who have worked really hard in preparing this budget financial year 21/22 under the leadership of our former CEO Kelly Grisby and also current acting CEO Natalie Walker. There are many strategies addressed in this budget. I just would like to pick up a few, pick a few. First, I would like to thank the director of the City Life, Alison Kenwood and her team for the hard work that they put in in promoting health and wellbeing of the residents in Wyndham, in particular my ward in Point Cook, by reviewing the Jamison Way Community Centre Master Plan to look at the feasibility to include a multipurpose indoor sports facility capable of hosting indoor sports. At the same time, also exploring possibilities of using school facilities for indoor sports and by allocating appropriate funding in 21/22 financial year for business and concept planning towards detailed design. I'm particularly thankful to councillor Maynard as a sports portfolio holder for his support in such a facility and of course, all my fellow councillors. Secondly, I would also like to express my gratitude to the director of city design and livability, Ludo Camberreid and his team for supporting the sports strategy, which is to supercharge the active transport from $1 million, around $1.5 million to $4 million. We have an active transport budget sitting around $1 to $1.5 million for, or sell for many years. And finally, the change. In the future years, I would really like to see Skeleton Creek located from the north side of Upper Point Cook to be able to connect to the Hoppers Crossing train station via active transport to ease the traffic jam around our city. On behalf of the cyclists and pedestrians where they are really happy, thank you, Ludo, once again to you and your team. Thirdly, I would also really like to see the budget allocated to enhance the community demand for the provision of generalised youth programmes, working hand in hand with the state government or potential external stakeholders who are interested in providing youth services with council. Inadequate and underutilised youth services have been ongoing issues for many years. It is important to provide a safe and supportive environment for our youth for the stability of the community. Fourth, I would like to also commend our officers' work in allocating the budget into learning community strategy, which is my portfolio, to have lots of community centres and still some of them is upcoming. And overall, I would like to make just a comment that I would really like to see a balanced allocation of funds across different wards. And last but not least, I would like just to make a comment of the process of generating this budget. So, I would like to give feedback, hopefully next time we have more time discussing the budget together next year. Madam Mayor, I would like to request a two full days discussing the budget with my fellow councillors, colleagues and the key officers next year. Besides, I would also like to have all the full business cases to be provided as a complete package of this budget. However, our CFO, Binda Gohel and our director of city operations, Stephen Thorpe, have been very supportive in answering all the questions that I have and with my work councillors. I would agree therefore to agree for this draft annual plan and budget to be put forward for community feedback. And I encourage, really encourage, community members to actively give feedback to us so we can do what community would like to. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Gilligan?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think I'll start by reiterating a point that councillor Barrera made in terms of the importance of supporting young people and more broadly, people that are currently unemployed into employment. We've put an extra million dollars in initiatives in this budget. There's some other issues in this budget and there's some real interesting numbers that I think we need to start having a talk about within our community. And that begins with the number 45 million and it continues to grow. That's the gap that exists due to rate capping to what we would have in our budget today. We'd be able to fund two Wyndham Cultural Centre redevelopments. There are some other interesting numbers in these budgets, particularly around child and maternal health services and school crossings. We get told time and time again about our fair share, 50/50 state funding between the state and local governments and there's clearly millions of dollars of gap in terms of funding. We are not getting 50%. In fact, we're funding some 70/30 model, which has significant impact on the rate payer base. Our employee costs are up 11.9% in this year's budget. That's unfair when you politicise and sensationalise that number, but the reality is, when you have a rate capping environment, it impacts on wages, but it also impacts on the amount of funds that we can spend within our city on projects that matter. And I think that this is an inevitable problem that will continue to grow on rate capping. And I do contrast that with property taxes by the state that continue to be rampantly out of control in terms of increase when compared to the overall rate mix here in the City of Wyndham. I think we need to do more on open space, in particular tree canopy, and I take the point that councillor Barrera has a notice of motion tonight, but the financials show me that we need to do more in that space. I'm particularly excited by the urban design framework opportunities that are in this year's budget because we need to start talking about the type of city that we want to build, not having the type of city that we don't want to see in terms of livability. I am interested in how we continue to reform and modernise the RDF, how we can go from a $4.6 million surplus to just $85,000. We have to do more in this space in terms of income producing. I've been very clear about that and I will continue to be clear about that over the course of the term whilst I'm an elected representative in this place. And finally, I want to talk about the problem more broadly of being able to finance projects and infrastructure. We talk about the importance of livable city, but we need to start talking about the amount of assets that we take on. In the last, over the next five years, including last year, over a five-year budget estimate, $687 million of assets will fall on our books. That's roads, that's parks, that's pathways, that's infrastructure that ultimately will need urban revitalisation over time. That impacts on our budget, that will cost us more and over the next 10 to 15 years, it's going to get harder and harder in terms of how we are able to fund these upgrades and the types of choices that we need to make, which sort of lends itself to the point that I made tonight about being more, I guess, frugal where we can around the distribution of the three tiers of government and who has responsibility for what, which is very much the framing of what I'm saying tonight. And finally, I know there's been a lot of talk about the indoor sports facility. Well, we know in the PSP that Tarnett on Leaks Road is in dire need of an indoor sporting recreation facility. I'll look forward hopefully to that site being prioritised in addition to 1160 Sayers Road. That's it from me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree for this budget to be put out for public consultation. This year has been a difficult process with tight timelines and balancing so many different elements, looking to rebound from Covid-19 and being very aware that some businesses and individuals are still heavily impacted. Our increased population growth and making sure that all parts of our municipality get their fair share, while ensuring we deliver value for money for our residents. Being year one of a four-year term, the budget usually has many elements that are in the pipeline already, so there is less scope for projects that we see as important for Harrison Ward. There are also numerous projects included in the budget yet to come to council for a decision and many still to come on topics that are close to people's heart, like the toilet strategy in parks and open spaces and the dog parks audit. There was a clear ask from Point Cook and Williams Landing as part of the community engagement for an indoor sports facility. It is referenced here and I'll be advocating strongly for it. I would like to highlight just a few elements of this year's budget. The $12.31 million for the delivery of the Truganiner South East Master Plan and the $5.6 million to deliver new sporting facilities at Brookdale Reserve in Saltwater, Point Cook. These developments will deliver timely and important sporting infrastructure to help the growing communities of Point Cook and Truganiner, to help stay healthy and active. Along with this, we're investing in Jamison Way, Point Cook. We want to make sure in planning this, we don't miss this vital opportunity. As we are well aware, there is little vacant land in Point Cook and many needs, so the solution provided needs to address these. $3.2 million is attributed to greening the pipeline project to enable the continued transformation of the main outfall sewer into a continuous parkland, connecting Williams Landing, Truganiner and the Point Cook, sorry, the Hoppers Crossing communities. There is $3 million in grants and contributions to continue to fund council's community grant and subsidies programme. We are putting resources into the hands of the local people to drive projects that strengthen Wyndham, leading to safer, healthier and more inclusive neighbourhoods. I'm really looking forward to seeing what kinds of community-led initiatives come through this investment. The $4 million invested in active transport includes funding improvements in lighting, wayfinding signage, pavements and shelter to make walking or cycling around our city safer, making Wyndham a nicer place to live, work and play. And finally, not forgetting our roads. The reconstruction of Sneed's Road from Lennon to Hackett's Road is the single biggest road reconstruction project in this year's total 8.9 million spend. Finally, two intersections in Point Cook, Dunning's and Lennon and Mars Franklin Boardwalk are to be signalised, intersections that are long overdue and dangerous. Construction hoping is to commence early in the new financial year. Please do give us your feedback on our plans and proposals and we'd love to hear your thoughts. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors we should speak on this item? If not, I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. Item 6.2.2, Resilient Wyndham Draft. The report is on pages 145 to 153, the recommendations on page 146, attachments are on page 154 to 217. Councillors, do you have a mover? Councillor Zetkowski, seconded by councillor Barrera. Councillor Zetkowski, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, I certainly would, Madam Mayor. Thank you. So, I'm proud to be speaking tonight on the merits of the resilient strategy. I'm proud as elected representative of this council, proud as the Climate Future Portfolio Holder and proud as a resident of this great city for 35 years. I've been part of this community for the majority of my life. I grew up here, I went to school here, I volunteered here and I'm raising my family here. Now I have the honour and privilege of representing my community here. The strong community spirit we have is one of my favourite things about Wyndham. This made even more evident through last year when we grappled with the eclectic shock of a global pandemic. While it was a challenging year, there was a lot to come from it. The strength of our community shone through. We saw people across the city banding together to look out for each other. I ran for council last year, sorry, when I ran for council last year, I made a commitment to our residents that I'd fight to ensure that the council creates a more livable city that is in tune with residents' needs. It's safe to say that nobody was fully prepared for the year that 2020 was, but now that we're in a position, sorry, but now we're in a position when we can play, plan for future shocks and stresses and ensure we're in a strong position to bounce back and transform from these unpredictable events. That's exactly what the resilient strategy does. It's a wide-ranging whole of council document that sets the path forward as we embark on the mission of becoming a more livable, more resilient city. I could sit here and go through every aspect of the strategy and why it's great, but unfortunately, I'm limited in time, so I'll focus on my portfolio, climate futures and environment. Central to this portfolio is working with the community and stakeholders to respect, preserve and protect our local environment, including renewable energy, recycling, conservation and combating climate change. The strategy maps out a whole lot of great work over the term of this council in the climate futures portfolio. We know our climate is changing. In fact, Wyndham is characterised by hot summers and cool, often wet winters. However, over the past 10 years, our average rainfall has declined by 13%. Rising global temperatures ultimately lead to rising sea levels and coastal erosion, bringing about challenges for our coastal parks, waterways and significant habitat areas. Further to this, our signature grasslands, coastal salt marshes, grassy woodlands are classified as vulnerable, endangered or depleted. Our native grasslands, once a common ecosystem, are now critically endangered at a national level. Many plants and animals found in Wyndham are threatened, including 22 nationally listed and 119 state-listed species. The resilient strategy builds on the great work already done to ensure our local environment is respected and appreciated for sustaining life in Wyndham. If you have a read through the strategy, you'll see a range of targets that address these challenges and shocks. We're committing to achieving carbon neutrality for our corporate greenhouse gas emissions by 2023, bringing forward our commitment to ensuring our streets across Wyndham have at least 25% tree canopy. The previous commitment was to have this completed by 2040, we'll now do this by 2030. We'll be making sure that 30% of our parks have a community group involved in park design, care and management, ensuring water efficiency is maximised and alternative water sources are used to provide green and cool spaces. We're investing in council projects that supply 70 megalitres each year of treated stormwater by 2040. We'll be partnering with agricultural sector to prepare for and respond to the impacts of climate change. We're committing to a 10% reduction in Wyndham's urban area hotspots by 2030. These are just some of the areas in this strategy that build on our commitment at council to build a more resilient and livable city. I'd encourage all members of the community to have a read of the strategy, which as of tonight is out for public feedback. Let us know what you think and let us work together to continue to make Wyndham the best place to live, work and play.
Thank you, councillor Zetkowski. Any other councillors we should speak on this item? Councillor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Touching on some of the points that councillor Zetkowski raised, resilience obviously is a word that... a word that has been very important following the shock of the COVID-19 pandemic. And as we embark on the path to building a more resilient Wyndham, our role as the tier of government closest to our community has never been more important. Now is the time to build on our existing partnerships and foster new ones with community, community to promote fairness, trust and prosperity. While the resilient strategy covers a range of topics, this evening I'll be focusing on my portfolio, Future-Focused Economy. While the COVID-19 pandemic presented a range of challenges, our economy was the one area that took a massive hit. A key focus of this strategy is taking steps to build confidence in Wyndham as a business and employment hub and grow local jobs and businesses. We're committed to walking our talk. We understand the importance of forging positive partnerships with community, but this extends to our business community as well. We understand the need to support local businesses to ensure our local economy thrives. We need to do more to keep people shopping in our city, supporting local businesses and building on some of the great work we've already done. There are a range of targets in this strategy that show how we'll just, how we'll do this, from the Wyndham Connect initiative to building on the Win Local Economic Support Package and through embedding sustainable procurement here at Wyndham. I'd encourage everyone to check out the resilient strategy and provide feedback on how we can work together to build a more resilient city. And also, in the meantime, get to know your local and buy local. We've got great business, we've got a great business directory on our website, a go-to for all your local shopping needs. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The resilient Wyndham's draft strategy, in my opinion, is a really fine piece of work developed by council officers alongside the community feedback that has been gathered through the Shaping Wyndham Survey and the community conversations that have taken place across the city. As councillors Shaw and Zatkowski have already said, it comes off the back of the COVID-19 pandemic and it sets council's longer-term approach to recovery and resilience following the Wyndham Recovery Plan. Indeed, we all know that it was a challenging year in 2020 and Wyndham was certainly one of the hardest-hit communities. In fact, it recorded the highest number of cases of COVID-19 of any LGA across Australia. During our second wave in mid-2020, this council responded in ways previously unimagined and unexplored as residents struggled with disproportionate impacts from the pandemic. This experience served to expose vulnerabilities, gaps and inequalities across the Wyndham community, while at the same time highlighting our community's capacity to connect, to respond proactively when needed. Council's recovery plan was instrumental to supporting social and economic recovery across the city. Resilient Wyndham builds on that short-term response, but it also importantly weaves in the knowledge and skills gained through 2020 and into 2021 as restrictions have eased. It leverages the partnerships, the innovation and the goodwill that played such a strong role across our community throughout 2020. It prioritises Wyndham residents through a comprehensive range of targets, measures and actions, and nicely and importantly, it aligns to the Sustainable Development Goals to build and to further develop resilience and preparedness in the face of a range of potential future critical events. It acknowledges that disasters and disruptions affect people differently, sometimes exacerbating inequalities. Madam Mayor, we live in uncertain times and resilient Wyndham enables us to better prepare for, to respond to and recover from any disruptive event that we may have to face into the future. I commend this council's commitment to building community resilience and to strengthening our collective capacity and I look forward to hearing the views of the communities as they respond to this public consultation.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Councillor Ramesh and then councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Preparation for potentially catastrophic risks is a core necessity of every organisation and council is no exception. It can be uncomfortable to discuss circumstances that we wish to never encounter and have low probabilities of eventuating, so this plan is warmly welcome. Like all first attempts, there will no doubt be room for improvement as we apply the thinking and learn from others along the way. I look forward to seeing the community feedback and contributions that will make our plan stronger and in turn our community more resilient.
Thank you, councillor Ramesh. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As council's safer communities portfolio holder, I'm very excited about the resilient strategy being released for public consultation. While this strategy is wide-reaching and covers a range of topics, central to this strategy is the work to empower communities, build community capacity and community connectivity. Our population is large, is diverse and there's plenty to celebrate. We know that we're stronger together, we saw this right through last year. We also know that well-connected communities lead to improved safety, better mental health, wellbeing and being able to recover quickly in times of disaster. One initiative proposed in this strategy, the Resilient Streets Wyndham, aims to increase community connection and social cohesion, creating a sense of belonging and safer and better connected neighbourhoods. I look forward also to hearing from our community through this phase of consultation as we work together to build a city that is better prepared to deal with unforeseen shock. This consultation will include all different types of mediums, including social media, online and now able to do it in person as well, which is great. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Mahfud?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone, anybody that knows you, Madam Mayor, knows that I love this community. That's why I ran for council in the first place. That's why I've served in a range of committees across the community and I continue to do so. Currently as the president of the Grange Peter 12 College and president of the Truganaina Community Group, also serving as the president of the Warama for three years. It's something I do because I'm passionate about this city I live in. But I'm not alone, Madam Mayor. In Wyndham, we have well over 22,000 residents who volunteer in some capacity. There's 22,600 residents who donate their time and skills to the range of initiatives with the collective goal of building a stronger, more connected community. The benefits of a connected community is not a secret. We've seen it for years. Increased social capital and civic participation, inclusive places and spaces and looking out for one another leads to a stronger, healthier and more resilient community that bounces back quicker from unforeseen stresses and shocks. In fact, it helps to minimise the impacts of these situations. The aim of the resilient Wyndham strategy is to ensure Wyndham is able to build back better from the COVID-19 pandemic. We're able to manage chronic stresses, prepared for future events such as climate change, extreme weather, natural disasters, pandemics and even other extreme events such as cyber attacks or terrorism. The resilient strategy maps out a clear path forward to build a more resilient city and I look forward to hearing how members of our community can play a role in a way that we can work together to build a better Wyndham. I'd like to particularly hear from our arts and culture community and look forward to their input. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mahfud. Councillor Marcus?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank councillor Peter McKinnon, who's done a fabulous job, along with all the others. Resilient Wyndham and I, I'm a bit disappointed to hear people saying building a better Wyndham. By God, I've lived here 52 years and I think it's been a brilliant city for most of that time. Yes, we have our ups and we have our downs, but I, I believe that this is a great city because why would we not, why are we living here if it's not a great city? This pandemic, and in a way, I'm sick of hearing about it, but it has done many things. Yes, it's brought hardship to many, many people, but it's brought our community closer together to work together, to support each other. The industry that has been hit the hardest, of course, was our business people. I would like to thank the landowners of this city who waived rent six months for all of those businesses to remain viable. So I, I think we should remember that without that group of people, these business people would be out of business. Yes, sadly, we've lost many, but we're now reinventing, recreating, becoming more inventive and we will get back to where we were. Yes, there's a fear in the arts industry where we're trying to organise the events that we couldn't organise last year. We have the fear that we are going to do all this work and at the last minute, if there is another lockdown, all that work has been wasted. But all my friends in the arts industry are prepared to have a go, to make sure that we can continue on, to give people of this city something to look forward to. So again, to the council officers, thank you very much. Great to have this policy. I think that a lot of the residents will be very pleased to read it and hopefully they will comment on it. But what I have seen is people have come together and working together to make sure that we all survive, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak? Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to start my speech with the definition of resilient. I just Googled it. It says the capacity to recover quickly from difficulties. So for my background, I would like to, as a teacher, I would like, a physics teacher, I would like to use this analogy, like how quickly a spring wind stretched, returned to its original shape. So that's resilient. So for many years, a community, as a community members of this, members of this community, I've been involved in a range of initiatives that support our community. Some of these initiatives include connecting and empowering women, assisting new migrants, bridging the gaps between different cultures, supporting young mothers, studying non-for-profit organisation, charities, organisation, including faith-based organisation and much more. Now, as a councillor, I would, I'm really looking forward to seeing this resilient strategy. It's really exciting and I would love to continue this work here in the chamber with this, yeah, supporting this strategy. The resilient strategy is a great plan that considers all people across our community. Wyndham is a young city, it's vibrant and it's diverse. This strategy is one of that acknowledges this about our community and plans out a range of ways we can increase connectivity and build a more resilient city. It sets a clear target of being more inclusive of women and gender diversity, increasing community connection and create a sense of belonging and safety. And last but not the least, as a portfolio holder of a learning city, I would like to emphasise that a resilient community is a community that learn and grow and allowing a little bit of stretch, sometimes like a spring, so that we can cope okay when pandemic such as COVID hits. And I, I also would like to thank Natalie Walker as the head of Strategy and Policy Impact and Peter McKinnon for this great, fantastic document implemented, presented to us. And I would look forward to hearing our community feedback on it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 6.3.1 Gifts, Benefits and Hospitality Policy. The report is on pages 218 to 227. The recommendation is on page 218 and the attachments are on page 228 to 238. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Ramesh, seconder? Councillor Maynard. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
Yep, I'll say a few words, Madam Mayor, thank you. The integrity of council, its independence from commercial influence and the honesty and respect of council staff and councillors is an integral foundation stone of a strong and vibrant city. Any step towards enhancing the transparency of council's independence from undue influence will always have my full support.
Thank you, councillor Ramesh. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the, a motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 6.3.2 Australian Local Government Association National General Assembly motions 2021. The report is on pages 239 to 242, the recommendation's on to, on page 240. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Mahfud, do I have a seconder? Councillor Hill? Councillor Mahfud, would you like to speak on this item? Any other councillors which should speak? Put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Sorry, I think councillor Barrera had a conflict on that one, that's why she walked out. My apologies for not catching it earlier. Can we ask her to come back in, please? Item 6.3.3 MAV State Council motions, May 2021. The report is on pages 243 to 246, the recommendation's on page 243. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Ramesh, seconder? Councillor Hill? Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak to this item?
Not much to say, Madam Mayor, but I would just like to say that I've consulted with the acting CEO, CEO on this matter and both these draft motions have my support to be pushed forward.
Thank you, councillor Ramesh. Councillor Gilligan?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Both of these issues are fundamentally important. When we talk about livability in the city of Wyndham, there is no two bigger issues than these ones. The first is in relation to securing land, of course, in, in parts of our city and we've seen the case of Elements Estate, the absolute disaster of catastrophe, I would call it, in terms of public policy gap between what the expectation is of non-government school land versus government land and the role of the state in terms of managing that. It is particularly interesting that the state government recently moved the planning and, sorry, the parliament voted or currently voting, as I understand, on the Planning and Environment Act Amendment 2021, which essentially gives enormous power to the minister via the governor in council to essentially determine, in the case of a developer knocking down a heritage building, that it can be classed as illegal and that the minister has the power to direct or ultimately write to the governor to prohibit any development whatsoever on the land for up to 10 years. Now, it's an interesting concept because something like that may well be what we seek to do or advocate for and we'll, we'll see what the strategic planning review proposes next month, but we simply cannot accept that the state just has its hands off in terms of responsibility and that when council has made such a clear and unequivocal statement that we do not want to see land designated for schools turned into residential housing, it becomes a question as to who is ultimately going to deal with this, particularly at a state level and give us the power that we so desperately need to protect our community. In the case of managing developer contributions, this is a great example of where parts of our city, which are essentially double taxed, they pay a developer contribution, then they pay general tax and we've seen millions of dollars siphoned out of the growth area investment funds to fund what should be funded in a state budget, bus routes through PTV, rather than Sayers Road train station, Davis Road train station, the key infrastructure projects that unlock Tarneat and Tarneat North. And the fact that, again, a handful of people are being able to make these decisions, not on the basis of infrastructure need, not on the basis of independency, but based on politics, is precisely why this does need to change and that's why the auditor general's recommendations are so important. So this is why this council has taken a strong stance on both those motions and I'm glad to hear councillor Ramesh supports them, but I think it is important that we continue to advocate in this space. This will not go away and these two issues will form a lot of what we talk about over the course of the term of this council. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 6.3.4 Proposed Amendments to the MAV Rules 2013. The report is on pages 247 to 252, recommendations on 248, the attachments are on page 253 to 254. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm sure it wouldn't surprise you that I intend to move that council supports option two in relation to the proposed motion put forward by councillor Sharp for Moonee Valley City Council in consideration at the 21 May 2021 MAV State Council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Do I have a seconder on that motion? Councillor Shaw? Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Do I have a seconda on that motion? Councillor Shaw. Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on that item?
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So it's pretty clear that the sector is ultimately local government sector, all 79 councils will get a say in May to fix a loophole that exists in the existing M A V rules that form the statutory peak government local body. Ultimately, Wyndham City Council is clearly a case study, but it's not the only case study. Burundara City Council and Whittlesey City Council are case studies. But obviously, Wyndham City, in terms of the third council in a row that has inadvertently or purposely, depending on how people interpret, have, have fallen victim to this rule that Moonee Valley City Council and councillor Sharp are intending to put the resolution to fix this loophole. Becomes a general question, Madam Mayor, about whether or not you have a view on democracy and how ultimately you see it work. In this instance, this would remove the ability for a council to forcibly remove the sitting leader of the peak body, representative of the statutory peak body. Really is as simple and as refined as that. It's a question about good governance ultimately and it's about whether or not a sector should be beholden to a vote that each council gets or whether a council should have the power to ultimately remove either a president or an interim president as it's stated in the wording. This would prohibit politics as well, Madam Mayor. It would create stability in what has been a very unstable situation. And we know from the community, whether it's state or federal, when you have the revolving door of leaders in state or federal parliaments, this is exactly the same in the context of the M A V where a, a leader ultimately was removed that was democratically elected. So this rules change will fix that. It is about good governance. It is clearly going to be, from all intents and purposes, what I have heard, going to be supported overwhelmingly by the sector. And it therefore becomes a question about whether this council takes a principled position about good governance now that it's no longer about the person. This is not about an individual and who holds the role now. That's not what we will vote on today. What we will vote on is whether we agree, in the best interests of good governance, that this loophole is fixed and it is fixed forever and local government is not looking like the circus that occurs in state and federal parliaments where political leaders can be forcibly removed. That is what we will vote on this evening, in my opinion, with this rules change and that is why I do support the proposed resolution this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Gilligan, any couns, any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I, councillor Zakowski?
I'd like to express my views on, on how fraught bringing a decision of this nature into the chamber is. We as councillors have democratically elected councillor Ramesh to represent, represent us on the M A V, on M A V matters. This comes with a degree of faith and she certainly has my confidence in her ability to make decisions in the best interests of Wyndham. While we ultimately will form a decision here tonight or a position here tonight, the dichotomy of for and against can't possibly cover all the possible scenarios that will occur when councillor Ramesh has to take this position to the meeting in May. Should the proposed rule change be amended on the day, it leaves us in the unenviable position of leaving our representative without clear direction. So ultimately requiring her to either abstain or to ultimately use her, exercise her discretion in the end anyway. This only become, comes about by formalising this position tonight. Instead, I believe an informal consultative process involving all councillors would have given councillor Ramesh a better understanding of all our views and enabled her to exercise her judgment in what will be, what will be a fluid process. So the, we were about to put it to a vote. I, I got in right at the last minute. There doesn't seem to be many arguments against. I think this is the fundamental flaw in, in what putting this, to this meeting is, is that councillor Ramesh doesn't actually have anyone's opinion on this matter except for one councillor and now mine. But the, not so much that I'm for or against part B, it's more that I think that bringing it to this chamber was fundamentally flawed, but we move to the vote.
Councillor Ramesh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the M A V delegate, I've consulted M A V governance for advice on this matter and I have been advised that the M A V Act is currently being reviewed, following which the M A V rules in its entirety will be reviewed. And in fact, it is planned to be included in the draft, M A V draft strategic plan, which will be presented at the state meeting in May. From what I understand, there is no immediate impact for this rule to be singled out and addressed and assessed in isolation. There are other requests that I have been made aware of that are of more urgency, which form part of this collective assessment. I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, councillor Ramesh. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure why we've got a view that bringing something like this into the chamber is flawed. It's actually quite, in my view, good governance because councillor Ramesh is actually the council's delegate. She needs, she needs to take the position of the majority of councillors, not people's personal views on this matter. So I actually think this is something that does need to come into the chamber. So there is a decision of council to our delegate that she represents the council's majority view, whatever that ends up being tonight. So it's actually not flawed. It's actually good governance. And regardless of the decision, I think councillor Ramesh will take forward the actual majority position of council in relation to this matter. That's actually her role as the M A V delegate and it's actually our role to provide a position to her. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Any other councillors? Councillor Gilligan, as there's been speakers against, would you like to write a reply?
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I guess I've been pretty clear that this isn't about person and I appreciate the rebuttal clearly has been. And I don't intend to talk to the merits of who has the role now, who should have had the role. I think it's really all irrelevant. I think we've, there's been people that have paid. I think this council has paid a personal price, frankly. I think we know that privately, we know the culture.
Madam Mayor, that's misleading, irrelevant statement to this conversation.
I know councillor Ramesh would be hurting me saying that, but I mean, it's the truth and it's worth.
It's not the truth. It was a democratic process. So please, I move that this motion be put toward, Madam Mayor.
Please.
If the Ramesh has to call a point of order, she needs to be quiet.
If there's no point of order.
Councillor Gilligan, councillor Gilligan, can you please finish up?
Well, I've used, I've used the three minutes I'm entitled and I, look, I appreciate councillor Ramesh is very passionate about this issue and, you know, ultimately, I guess I'm the victim, so I would be too. But I think what is so important here is a couple of things. It is so important that there is a council position because clearly the delegate holds a different view. Now, if the council has a formed position, the delegate will have to vote that way. And if she doesn't, she will have to resign. It will be as simple as that. And that is why it is important to understand what the council's position is, to take the politics out of this. To not have people go away and say, well, you know, the delegate might have a different view, but the council doesn't have a position. Tonight we will have one and that position will be clear. It's not about a person. It's not about me. It's not about councillor Ramesh. It's not about who is the M A V president today. It's about who it could be tomorrow and whether they would be a victim to what has occurred in this place in December and what has occurred in Whittlesey City Council and Burundara in the past. It has to end. That is what one council has proposed. I have no doubt there will be overwhelming support for this in the sector because people recognise this must end. And it is a little embarrassing that we are the most contemporary example of it, which is why I encourage councillors to say on a principled basis, let's at least propose this never happens to anyone else ever again. And I think that would close this chapter in a way that it is still clearly open and we do need to move on. And I think the best way to move on is clearly to clean up the rules so no one else falls victim to this, both council, councillors and community. And that is why I would be encouraging people to support option two this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillors, I now put the item to a vote. All those in favour? All those against? The motion has been carried. Item 6.5.1, Growing Suburbs Fund, Round Two, 2020 to 2021. The report's on pages 255 to 258. The recommendation's on page 255. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Barrera and seconded by councillor Mafoud. Councillor Barrera, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. Look, I agree that we should endorse these projects tonight and I also agree on the order that they have been recommended. The Growing Suburbs Fund provides an opportunity to contribute to much-needed community infrastructure. For Wyndham, projects funded through the G S F help contribute to important social infrastructure projects that support the needs of growing communities and help create local employment. In particular, it's been pleasing to see the $3 million investment announced by the state government for the Wyndham Cultural Centre for 2021, 2022 and to see investment in the arts being prioritised in this city. The arts suffered immensely during the pandemic and this investment is timely and welcome. The Wyndham Cultural Centre, I think it was councillor Shaw who said earlier, it's served this community well for 20 years, but it's no longer fit for purpose. This funding enables us to reimagine, to begin to reimagine what the Wyndham Cultural Centre could be, the kinds of services and programmes that it could offer this community into the future. We've got the opportunity with this funding to create and re-envision, re-envision the arts in our city, including to provide arts and cultural programming and services that highlight and promote the diversity of this community and at the same time, celebrate that diversity. These projects proposed for endorsement both highlight the community's vision for connection, whether that's through the arts for all ages and stages of life or through sport and rec opportunities for young people. I look forward to seeing what's possible for both projects as a result of this investment if this recommendation is endorsed.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Mafoud?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too endorse this list of projects that we're putting forward for the Growing Suburbs Fund. This, the two projects here that are highlighted tonight, the Wyndham Cultural Centre redevelopment project and Lorry Emmons Reserve Youth and Skate Facility are both, a couple of projects that are both well, both well overdue. We've got the full amount for the Lorry Emmons project, 1.5 million, but unfortunately only got half the amount for the Wyndham Cultural Centre redevelopment. So we did ask for 6,000, 6,000, of course, 6 million as outlined in the report. Left a couple of zeros out there. Only, we've only got 3 million. So it's something that I take note, we also, I think we all take note earlier, what councillor Gilligan said earlier, that we need to hit the state and the feds up for some more, for more money. There is ways that we can, we can break this project up. It's something that we could always maybe do it in stages. We don't have to do the whole lot at once, but we do need to do this. We do need to commence the construction within 18 months to take on this. All these projects we've had to put forward had to be shovel-ready and had to be, have plans ready to go. So this is one that we did have some plans for, although there is some time now to put those plans out for public consultation. So it's something we will do in the, in the near future. We need, do want to hear what the community has to say. We want to hear the arts community. But I think this is one project that many would agree, even if some may agree the price tag is high, that many would agree this is a project that we really need to move forward with. And I'm glad that we've gotten at least some money towards that project. We can continue to look for other sources of funding. We will continue to look at other grants. We will look at, look to the feds for money. It's something that, it is a big price tag. Maybe we shouldn't take on the whole lot on our own, but it's definitely a project that's very worthwhile for the Wyndham community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mafoud. Any other councillors which should speak? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour?
Sorry, did have.
Sorry, councillor McIntyre? Yes, quickly, yep.
Sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that my understanding was that I'm voting for this recommendation here was that this allows the discussion to continue and that we aren't actually necessarily committing to deliver the Wyndham Cultural Centre as it is because the amount that what we asked for and what we've received has been very different. So I will be agreeing with this recommendation going forward and look forward to the discussion of what it will look like and how it will be funded.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors which should speak? I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, against, the motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. 6.5.2, Learning Community Strategy, 2018 to 2023, Community Update Number Two. The report is on pages 259, as I, thank you. I was saying, the report's on pages 259 to 262. Recommendation's on 259. Attachments are on 263 to 269. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Hill, seconded by councillor Mafoud. Councillor Hill, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank Alison Kenwood and Rhonda Radjen and the team for producing such a great update. Secondly, I would also like to thank councillor Gilligan for being part of the great work that he done last year in this space. Thank you. The Learning Community Strategy, 2018 to 2023, is Wyndham's driver for innovation and change in learning and functions as a roadmap for developing an equitable, inclusive and innovative learning community. The strategy establishes lifelong learning as a guiding principle driving social, economics, environmental and cultural life in the community, which are organised according to four main themes. Number one, celebrating living and learning, which is to acknowledge successes of learning. We celebrate learning through learning festival, festival and innovative, innovative education showcase last year. Number two, advocating for equity and quality in service provision. The services and opportunities that we want to provide is hopefully available for all. We try to provide services across Wyndham fairly and easily accessible. We also successfully advocate for schools in Wyndham. Three, facilitating partnership and collaboration across sectors. For example, if a community members want to learn a skill, we would try our best to provide opportunity for such a need. We work very closely with R T Os and provide learning opportunity in upskilling our residents, including partnership with the Smith family last year, for innovating learning and fostering new entrepreneurial spirit. Lots of successes achieved despite COVID hits last year. In the midst of difficulty, the team led by Rhonda Radjen and Diane Teber and the team continued to strive and try their best in seeking alternative ways of delivering the 2020 to 2021 Learning Community Strategy actions. Not just working in Wyndham, but also working collaboratively with City of Milton and even with countries around the world. I speak very highly of this document and I would like to thank, once again, Alison Kenwood, Rhonda Radjen, Diane Teber and the entire Learning City team for such excellent work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak on this item? Councillor Gilligan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just thought I briefly thank councillor Marcus for securing the Wind Talk for that year. It was, if you recall Heather, it was, it was very good. You had Steve come and present to us, a global presenter in terms of the Wind Talks and a good example of the sort of thought leadership sessions that we're providing to the community for the future, for the foreseeable future. So I'm sure councillor Hill will enjoy that portfolio over the course of the four years. I also put on the record my appreciation in the last term to Diane and Rhonda and the team, to Jack DeCandice for all of the work that they did in the last term as well. And, and do reiterate that I think this report being presented to chamber on an annual basis is important, something that I fought for, noting that we do have competing interests in terms of what actually does come here for a vote and ultimate conversation. But it is important that we continue to talk about the sort of strategies overarching what we're doing in education and community learning, but also how we're implementing and delivering them on a yearly basis. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour, against, the motion is carried. Thank you. Can we please call councillor Barrera back in? Item 6.5.3, Alfred Road Reserve Draft Master Plan. The report is on pages 270 to 275. Recommendation's on page 270 with the attachments on 276 to 299. ninety nine. councillor Maynard, I see you'd like to move it. Any councillor that would like to second the motion? councillor Shaw. councillor Maynard, would you like to speak to it?
I certainly would, Madam Mayor, and, and, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's certainly great to see the draft master plan presented for what is shaping to be a very exciting site. In one of my previous terms on council, we approved the purchase of this land to address an under-provision of open space in the local area. Now, through the development of this site, we are proposing to deliver a facility that will provide local access for residents to participate in cricket, AFL, soccer, netball, running, walking and play. That's well over one thousand residents being physically active and connecting each week, which we all know is important for health and wellbeing. I would certainly like to thank the following clubs, the Werribee Cricket Club, Werribee Junior Cricket Club and the Werribee Masters Football Club, who have contributed to shaping the draft master plan to date. I am most certainly looking forward to the opportunities that this facility will offer for respective clubs who will be using this facility once it is built. And I do call on those in the community, Madam Mayor, through you, to provide the feedback that will ensure that the eventual master plan that is adopted will reflect the wants and needs of those in the community. And as we proceed to public exhibition, I certainly encourage all those members to provide their feedback via our, our website, The Loop, and provide the information that certainly we're looking for from the community, so that we can further progress this planning of this reserve. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Any other councillors? councillor Shaw.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I support the comments that councillor Maynard has put forward. Clubs have been involved in the consultation piece, and now it goes out more widely to the community, which it's always great to get that feedback, it's actually really important. One thing I would like to put on the record though is that the Werribee Junior Cricket Club, so they have put a request in specifically to have one or two ovals allocated to them. These have not been included in the draft master plan. Last term, a few people from the Junior Cricket Club and even the Werribee Cricket Club spoke to me how the Werribee Junior Cricket Club does not actually have a home base. They didn't have one last year, they work out of Soldiers and I think another ground as well. They field twenty four teams, they're a huge junior club, and yet look like having to share not only with the seniors of the Werribee Cricket Club, which is, I'm sure they're absolutely fine with, and it's great to see them being looked after in this master plan, but also with other competing sports as well. We've got to do better than this, and quite frankly, I'm sick of actually raising it, so I'm going to raise it again tonight, that we need to build facilities that are going to cater for our sporting clubs into the future, because I don't want to be back here in eighteen months, in two years, in our last year, when we're talking about the Werribee Cricket Club now maybe having thirty teams that they're fielding, and they can't be at Soldiers' Reserve because Werribee Districts are fielding a huge number of teams as well. I mean, when are we going to start building facilities that actually our community needs? So I'm going to be advocating really strongly to see the Werribee Cricket Club, the Junior Cricket Club, get the actual sporting facility that they need at Alfred Reserve. These are our juniors in our community, they need a place to be. I'm sure there's other cricket clubs and football clubs that are having the same problems, but I do find it so frustrating that we have these conversations all the time about our sporting facilities, and yet sometimes we, we replace like with like. That's not going to sustain us. We're already two hundred and eighty thousand people, we're projected to be, you know, over a million, you know, in the next fifteen, sorry, five hundred thousand in the next, you know, ten, fifteen years. We've got to build facilities that will sustain us more longer than what we're doing now. So I'll be advocating really hard. I hope people that do actually put community consultation in, I'll certainly be contacting the cricket club to make sure that they get their actual voice heard in this, because it's time we started actually listening to what people needed, and I can't wait to see it, the community feedback come forward, so we can take for the advocacy for the Werribee Cricket Club and the Junior Cricket Club as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shaw. councillor Marcus.
Thank you very much. Well, I agree with all the comments from councillor Shaw. I was really upset today when we had phone calls from the Werribee Cricket Club and, and also from CAM. We need, they, the Junior Cricket Club, Werribee Cricket Club had their presentation two weeks ago. It went from two o'clock until eight o'clock, giving out awards to all of those little cricketers. And they, all of those teams that we've got here, the Werribee Cricket Club has had a dreadful time. They wanted their team to, to continue to play at Chenside Park, but they've had to leave there because of the football. And now they've got their own home ground, coming on this one, a facility, but we've got to look after the juniors. And what I want to advise all of the people, the door is not closed on this policy. Please put your point of view forward and make sure that we support the Werribee Cricket Club and the Werribee Junior specific grounds, so that we make sure that they have this. Because as far as I'm concerned, cricket is probably up and coming, especially with our Indian community, they love their cricket, and we have to make sure that we have those facilities. It's not just about the football, cricket is most important, and therefore we must make sure that we, after all the Werribee Cricket Club have gone through, that they have a smooth transition into their new home, along with their juniors. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Any other councillors? councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to echo what the councillors have said before, councillor Shaw and councillor Marcus. It just, to me, emphasises the importance of giving feedback from our community. When we're asking for feedback, we really want people to give feedback, and then we really want to show that we're listening to that feedback. When documents go out all the time, it's quite concerning how often I think people feel that that's a fait accompli, it's all done, that's it, don't bother. It isn't the case, and it really just emphasises the importance, so that's what I just wanted to stress. So please feedback and give us the opportunity to listen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors? councillor Ramesh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just echoing councillor McIntyre's words, I encourage the community to get involved in planning out this new recreational space, especially those that have been providing feedback to the council and councillors on the lack of specific amenities in the city. I would also like to advise people to consider what amenities would encourage them to spend more time outdoors, doing light activity in addition to the standard set of sports facilities that are proposed.
councillor Ramesh? Any other councillors which should speak? If not, I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against the motion is carried. Item six point five point four, councillor expense report for first of October to thirty first of December twenty twenty. The report's on pages three hundred to three hundred and two. Recommendation's on page three hundred with attachments on three hundred and three. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Ramesh, seconded by councillor Hill. councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak to this item?
Nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors which should speak? If not, I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against the motion is carried. Item six point five point five, review of merril and council allowance, pages three oh four to three oh seven is where you'll find the report, with the recommendation on three oh five. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Maynard, seconded by councillor Hill. councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not normally something I would speak on, but I, but I think on this occasion, I do need to, given the fact that on the first of December twenty twenty, the Minister of Local Government set the range of allowances under the Local Government Act nineteen eighty nine, and the new Local Government Act transfers the response, the new Local Government Act twenty twenty transfers the responsibilities of setting the merril and councils allowances to the Victoria Independent Remuneration Tribunal. However, this doesn't take effect until the end of this year, so the provision of the nineteen eighty nine act still apply, given that these provisions require that council sets its allowances within the parameters set by the minister on thirtieth of June, by the thirtieth of June of this year. Madam Mayor, this is why it has come to council without going to the tribunal, and I just move that we accept the recommendation as is, without any changes.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against the motion is carried. Item six point five point six, informal meetings of councillors, reports on page three oh eight, as well as the recommendation, with attachments at three oh nine to three thirteen. Councillors, there was an error in one of the meeting dates in the attachments, being the briefing of C two four three that was held on the fifteenth of February, not the fifteenth of March, as noted in the attachments. So this will be amended in a minute. So this C two four three briefing was actually February and not March. Other than that, can I put the motion to a vote? Ah, sorry. I'd like a mover, please. You knew, you all knew what I was talking about, councillors Kowalski. Do I have a second, councillor Mafud? councillors Kowalski, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other, any other councillors which should speak? councillor Shaw.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just having a quick look through that. I did note that we sent an officer to attend the Point Cook Action Group AGM. Just wondering why we would do that, along with three of the ward councillors obviously as well. Do you find that interesting that that's on this list of informal meetings of councillors? I would have thought it would be more our internal meetings than going to the Point Cook Action Group AGM and sending a council officer as well, talking about swimming pool in Point Cook, better use of parks and reserves and overcrowding of schools. So I'm just putting it on the record that I have some concerns about that. I'm happy to take that offline with the acting CEO, but I do find that highly unusual. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against the motion is carried. Item six point five point seven, a portfolio committee's report, pages three one four to three one six, with recommendations on three one five to three one six, and the attachments on three one seven to three four three. Councillors, do I have a mover? councillor Gilligan? Second, councillor Mafud. councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this one? Keep moving, no worries. Any other councillors which should speak on this one? If not, I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against the motion is carried. Item six point five point eight, external committee's report, pages three forty four is where you'll find the report, as well as the recommendation, with the attachments on three forty five to three forty nine. councillor Gilligan, I'll put you down as the mover. Do I have a second, councillor Maynard? councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this one? Any other councillors wish to speak? If not, I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against the motion is carried. Item seven, notices of motion. Seven point one, notice of motion six oh two, review of tree canopy. That motion is put forward by councillor Barrera. Would you like to speak to the motion? Oh, would you like to read out the motion, please? I'm happy to. Okay, I'm happy to, as tabled?
As tabled, yeah.
No worries.
But I would like to speak to it.
Yep, no worries. And do I have a second to the motion? councillor Gilligan, thank you. councillor Barrera, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's fair to say Covid nineteen's been talked about a lot tonight, but it is very relevant to this notice of motion as well, because it's really presented us with an opportunity, I think, to take stock, to reset and to move towards a more resilient future. The pandemic enabled our community to develop a strong connection with local parks, gardens and open space networks, and during hard lockdown last year, many turned to whatever open spaces were available within five kilometres of their homes. The importance of the natural environment played a critical role in the health and wellbeing of many. The shaping Wyndham survey and the series of community conversations held across the municipality have really captured that it's been a consistent priority with residents to make the natural environment important. I think this shift in community sentiment, out of experiences last year, as well as the knowledge that global temperatures are increasing, compels us to revisit our current tree planting programme and our tree canopy targets. Wyndham has one of the lowest levels of tree canopy coverage in the country. This leads to increases in urban heat and reduced amenity for the community. An update of the green cover benchmarking in Australia's cities and suburbs, Where Will All The Trees Be, was released in twenty twenty. This was the third instalment in a series of reports since twenty thirteen. It highlighted Wyndham City as having Australia's lowest recorded level of green cover and recording consistently low increments since twenty thirteen. Part of this is due to our, particular, our unique context, low rainfall, significant grass and agricultural lands, and competing uses for urban land. And the slow rate of canopy increase should not be seen as a criticism of efforts to plant trees across Wyndham. The challenges are complex. Yet as our grey footprint grows, trees are traded and extreme heat effects are therefore exacerbated. So it's timely to review the existing targets. Noting that our city forest and habitat strategy has existing targets for twenty twenty two that will not be met, this motion asks that we conduct a review to report on Wyndham's tree canopy and actions that can be considered to increase the amount of tree canopy, both in public and in private spaces. The motion also calls for consideration of how risks associated with council trees are managed based on our local conditions and vulnerabilities, so that we minimise net loss of trees, we maximise tree growth and longevity. This motion, I think, also aligns very nicely with the resilient Wyndham draft strategy, which also proposes to bring the twenty forty tree canopy targets in the city forest and habitat strategy forward to twenty thirty. I therefore consider it timely to move this notice of motion to review our current targets and for council officers to provide a report to us by September this year. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barrera. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? councillor Marcus.
Thank you. Yes, I had the environment portfolio for the last four years, and I thought we'd planted lots and lots of trees, and I was extremely disappointed to hear that we had the least trees out of any other council. And it's now over to Robert, you've now got that portfolio. But I really was very saddened when I drove around Trugonina and Tarnit, the number of new houses and townhouses with so few trees. But sadly, the fault is that the blocks of land are so small that it's very difficult to put and plant a lot of trees. And I know the council officers will work with the, the environment portfolio, and I think this report is timely, and I thank Jenny for putting it up. But I just would like to mention a couple of things. Jenny has outlined commercial and industrial areas. As you know, commercial areas are all paved areas. And the problem I see, and what the problems we've had in some of our shopping centres, is the trees lift all the pavers, and we've had many people falling. So council officers, I think when you're doing the report, you need to look at the species that you can put into the industrial, because you've got the big trucks in those areas, what trees are suitable. Gum trees really are beautiful, but out in the country and should not be planted. Nothing grows under them, and therefore we've got nature strips with nothing but, and when I see the mowing man across the road mowing clay every week, it makes my blood boil. But we need, I think we need to have an education programme for our residents. Now, I have a, I am very lucky, I have a huge block of land and I've probably got more trees than anybody else, and you can all come and see my trees, but the people next door to me do not want those trees growing over their fence. They cut them. They cut them back and they throw them back in my yard. So we need to be careful what trees we are educating our people to plant in their yards. Because, and I had to cut down two gorgeous trees in my front yard because the council came down and had complaints that they were growing over the footpath. So there's a lot, in this notice of motion, there is a lot of education we need to tell people what they can and cannot plant to grow. And yes, Jane Edmondson loves my property because she said, I've got so much shade in it. You can feel the difference on a stinking hot day. And we are two degrees hotter than the eastern suburbs. So my comments on this, please, council officers, we need an education programme on what people can plant in their... I was going to put a big jack-o'-rando up the back and Charlie Buttergig said, Heather, do not do that to your neighbour. Do not do that to your neighbour. So we need, and Salvation Army are all always great, they cut their trees back because it's a beautiful part of that, that commercial area with all the trees. But we need to make sure this report outlines what people can and cannot plant and we need to look what we're putting into our nature strips. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Marcus. Any other councillors? Councillor Zatkowski and then Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quickly, so I am the portfolio holder that this motion covers. And as my comments stated in my remarks regarding the resilient strategy, this council has seen fit to bring forward its targets of twenty five percent tree canopy from 2040 to 2030. It marked improvement a whole decade earlier than they were planning. I do hope this report does investigate whether or not we can even improve on that further. And I'm looking forward to seeing the result of this and I commend Councillor Barrera for bringing forward this motion.
Councillor Shaw.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I actually support the review around industrial and commercial areas. I actually think it's really quite important. And yes, it's not going to be appropriate everywhere and, you know, for every piece of the nature strip. But certainly in some of the industrial and commercial areas that I've seen, they need a lot of work. Very rundown, not well kept and looked after in some places. Not far from where I take my son swimming. I won't name which street it is, but there's been a burnt out car sitting on the nature strip now for, I don't know, three or four months. These are the things that I think, I did, I didn't report it, no. It is there with the business though, I need to say, so that's why I'm not going to talk about it too much. But, you know, these are the things that I think do need to change. And I think this actually gets us at least thinking about it, looking at what is there and what isn't, and then making some informed decisions from there. So I do support it. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. Councillor Ramesh and then Councillor Gilligan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Barrera's motion has my full support. Not only does increasing vegetation and canopy cover aid with relaxation, it is known to directly contribute to increased property value, mental health and have a substantial impact on our energy consumption for air conditioning, for our offices and our home. If we want to be a smart city, then this simple, non-technical action is a good step in the right direction.
Ramesh, Councillor Gilligan.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. You know, it wasn't that long ago, it was before the Western Roads package was done, used to drive up Deramet Road to Tarnit Station, park my car, but along the way, you had a real appreciation. There wasn't a lot of trees, but you had the appreciation of the trees in a, you know, in a straight road fashion, ride up Deramet Road. You drive up there today and it's, you're right, Councillor Marcus, it's, it feels barren, desert-like. It is a massive problem. And that is why I wholeheartedly support Councillor Barrera's prioritisation of this issue. We have to get ahead of this and we have failed to do it thus far. And it's a conversation about what type of trees? Why are we not successful? What are the impediments? Why is it that in our budget we've not allocated more in this space? More than I think we, we should be doing more. And that sort of conversation also includes the role of council versus the role of the individual, the role of community groups. Quite often, this council assumes responsibility for everything, whether it's community centres, I know Councillor Mafud and I were talking about that recently, to not putting an element of support around community groups and tree planting days and taking ownership in a neighbourhood sense. That is, I think, where we've got to get to in some parts of increasing the overall green cover in a neighbourhood fashion. And we are the worst in the country. We are the worst in the country. I mean, that is shameful. And we need to make sure that when we talk about a livable city, everybody, the first thing they picture is trees. I quite often hear this issue, why do we not have more trees? I don't know the answer to that question if I am frank and honest and that is what Councillor Barrera's notice of motion does. It makes me a more informed elected representative in understanding what are the issues and why are we not at a position where we're seeing more tree canopy cover in our streets? And that is precisely why I think this report will have significant momentum once it comes back in October of this year. So, well done, Councillor Barrera. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Hill and then Councillor McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council's work in tree planting is to be commented. Last year, even during COVID, council has planted 5,000 trees. The year before, eight thousand four, eight thousand four hundred trees and the year before, again, 5,200 trees. The, this year, council is planning to plant 21,500 trees. I would like, while I'm really supportive or very supportive of this motion, I would like to see if the report could be, could be drilled down into how many trees are planted in each ward. And as we see, community emails regarding tree planting in Charison Ward, and there were more trees. And there are many passionate community members who would like to have, who would like to see many more trees around our ward. And just to give one example, such as Cameron Johnston. And I thank community members from emailing us to raise their concerns. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill, Councillor McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to commend as well Councillor Barrera for this notice of motion. To add, because so much has already been said, I think at the popper park, which we've done in a previous year, we asked young people, what do you like most about living in your community? And it actually surprised me how many people spoke about trees, how they love trees and how they'd like to see more trees. And they drew lots of lovely pictures of, you know, trees and their family and playing and how important it was. And these people were between eight and 12, so they really are our future. And it just, it just reiterated to me just the level of importance. So I just wanted to commend you for bringing it forward and thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors which should speak? If not, I put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, against, the motion is carried. Item seven point two, notice of motion six oh three, enhancing planning scheme protections against multi-unit development in minimal change areas to protect your local neighbourhoods. Councillor Gilligan, as the motion has been put by you, I will assume you're going to move it and it's as tabled, we won't read the motion itself.
Yep, that's correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Mafud. Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item, please?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Look, this is complex and has many different layers, but I want to picture this in a way that says that you cannot ultimately continue to go down a pathway that says that we don't want to see multi-unit development in parts of our city if we don't then accept that we must change the rules first. We cannot consider application after application and vote it down based on a perception about the type of neighbourhood amenity and the type of neighbourhood that we want if we don't first consider the changes that we must make around parts of the city. This motion talks to parts of the city that essentially doesn't have a precinct structure plan or the Victorian Planning Authority involvement. And that is in large part areas including Werribee, Hoppers Crossing and parts, very small parts of Tarnit as well. And it is particularly focused on the fact that this city has an overwhelming majority of the zones, of one zone, general residential zone, rather than areas or pockets of our neighbourhoods classed as neighbourhood residential zone. And the report that was done in 2018, the Housing and Neighbourhood Character Strategy, talked to this problem about housing in areas which is underserviced in terms of public transport, infrastructure and essential services. Services that we all rely on and therefore must give regard to the type of housing that we are permitting in this space. It makes me sad when I see situations where a single detached home is being demolished in favour of four, five units because the block is large and because they have the ability to do so under our planning scheme. It is great. It cannot be defined as anything other than that. It's opportunism that costs our community dearly. I think everybody can think of an example where there is cars banked up, where there's significant multi-unit developments on a street in Werribee or in Hoppers Crossing. And this problem continues to be compounded day after day as more applications are ultimately submitted, as you see a change of ownership of properties and the relentless offerings of real estate agents, of subdivision opportunities on larger blocks, particularly in parts that aren't serviced by public transport opportunities. We have to change the game and it begins with the planning scheme amendment that must be put as soon as possible. We sought to do that in November last year and ultimately the department, the state government planning authority, refused to authorise it. However, I understand there is further room to move there in terms of approaching this planning scheme amendment and that's why a report as part of this will come to council if indeed this endorsed this evening. But I also want to paint a broader picture and talk about Brisbane City Council, who had the ambition and the drive and ultimately were able to change the game by putting a blanket ban on townhouse and multi-unit development outside of a 10 kilometre radius, I think it was, of their city centre. Extraordinary. Here you have a council that dictated to the state about the type of planning scheme that they wanted, the type of properties, the type of development that they wanted in their city. And we have not done that. We have not been proactive in the type of planning reform that we have much, much needed over the years. Instead, we have been a significant pro-growth council and left the consequences to future terms like ours to have to grapple with. This is a good example of a consequence of over-development, in my opinion. And as I mentioned, there are examples that councillors, I'm sure, can turn their minds to where they could question whether or not really it was the best outcome for the city to see a multi-unit development approved on that space. But we know that we are limited based on the existing planning scheme provisions to be able to stop it. Well, I'm saying it's time to change the rules. And that's what this proposal does. It protects parts of Hoppers Crossing, it will protect parts of Werribee who so desperately need this. And it won't repair the damage that has already occurred, but it will stop the future circumstances that I've described this evening from happening again. The protection of the environmental and heritage areas of our city and making sure that we try and preserve that livable city that we've been talking about. The points that Councillor Marcus said about the type of city that she's loved to live in for many decades. Well, it's changing and we're seeing the subdivision and ultimately smaller and more multi-unit development in parts of the city that do not need it. And we need to stop it before it's too late. So I encourage councillors to support this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Any councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Mafud.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Councillor Gilligan for bringing this notice of motion before our chamber. This is an issue that we've had to grapple with within this very room. We have our planning meetings, we have residents to stand right here before us, quite angry, I could say, upset at a potential development that's going next door to them. We have to sometimes make decisions that we've not, you know, not really in our favour. Really, when something fits the Wyndham planning scheme, if something fits ResCode, we have to almost give it, give it a tick. And often we don't, there's times we don't, we let our, I shouldn't say our motions get the better of us. We stand up for our community, as I think Councillor Hill used at one of our last planning meetings. And sometimes we do need to, I get that. But sometimes I feel that if we're going to try and go against some plan, then it's going to go to VCAT and just get overturned. Are we really wasting our time? So this is the way to do it. This is the way that we need to really stand up for our residents. We need to put something within our planning scheme that can try and limit or stop these sorts of developments in areas where they're really, areas where they're not, not needed, not wanted, that it's not really... We look, we look at our new areas, we look at our new PSPs, but our older areas need to be protected. And this is the way to do it. This is the way to like, put something within our Wyndham planning scheme, enhance our neighbourhood character strategy or as if there's an updated version or another version that's done, we need to put these protections in place. So this is the way to do it. So I think Councillor Gilligan put this before us.
Thank you, Councillor Mafud. Councillor McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with this notice of motion tonight. I think it's important that we need to strengthen our planning controls where we can to ensure that there isn't inappropriate development all across the municipality. Residents are increasingly seeing older developments and in looking at us to try and help and support them. We need to have in place as strong controls as we can to ensure that our decisions are upheld and not overturned by VCAT. We understand what our community needs, a link that doesn't appear to exist where many VCAT decisions are made, especially where they overturn ours. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors? Councillor Marcus.
Yes, I'd like to thank Councillor Gilligan. I remember going to a planning workshop in Melbourne many years ago and spoke to the, one of the presenters and he said, well, councils need to do stand up and do something about it. Because a lot of the time, we've got no say. Where I live, I could put seven storeys of flats on my, my building and sadly, I'm going to be raided out of living in that property. This has got to stop. This has got to stop. Talking to many of the residents in Werribee, and Werribee's the target area because we have very large blocks there. Why should these people lose their love of the big block, beautiful homes, with the leafy gardens and everything else, just because the planning scheme says that people can build four, five, six, seven, eight storeys high? So thank you, Josh, Councillor Gilligan, for doing that. And I hope, I hope we can make a difference.
Thank you, Councillor Marcus. Councillor Maynard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, oh, thank you, Councillor Zatkowski. Madam Mayor, firstly, I want to make it clear that I support appropriate planning controls to ensure that development responds to neighbourhood character. Development outcomes can contribute positively to local neighbourhood character, characters whilst minimising loss of amenity is important to our community, particularly in the established parts of a city like Werribee and Hoppers Crossing. What I don't support, Madam Mayor, is doing the important task of preparing strategic planning policies on the run and via a notice of motion. Madam Mayor, there are processes that we are required to follow under the Planning and Environment Act, including public consultation. And I think it is inappropriate for it to be done via a notice of motion. Growth and change is to be driven by a number of factors and we should not be taking this up via a notice of motion. Planning for the city is a serious undertaking and we should be following due process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Maynard. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? As it has been a speaker against, Councillor Gilligan, would you like to close the debate?
Probably to say that I don't know how anyone could, I don't know how you could suggest it's not due process. I mean, ultimately, a notice of motion is the one process, the one mechanism, if we wish to talk about due process, for a councillor to submit a request, a resolution, a direction, if you will, for an issue that has substantive importance. And it's worth noting to Councillor Maynard that I won't be writing the report, council officers will. So I just thought I would note that, that's what's in the provision, so... So I hope council officers won't be doing it on the run. I don't expect that they will. I expect they'll be making a very thorough and well-informed report back to councillors for our ultimate determination. But I simply reject the idea that due process hasn't come. I don't even know what that means really, but I just thought it was worth adding that, given ultimately that's been mentioned. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried.
We'll call a division on that one, please.
A division, no worries. Councillors, all in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Mafud, Councillor McIntyre, Councillor Gilligan, Councillor Hill, Councillor Ramesh, Councillor Shaw, Councillor Marcus and Councillor Barrera. All those against, councillors, Maynard, Councillor Zatkowski, Councillor Hegidich. Item six point three, notice of motion six oh four, local laws reform. Councillor Gilligan, you've raised this one and again, I'll table the motion as put in the report and I presume you'll be moving this again?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Councillors, do I have a second? Councillor Shaw. Councillor Gilligan.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This addresses... Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This addresses two components that I will touch on this evening. The first is the component that relates to a proposal that officers draft and provide council with a proposed local laws change to require a property owner that owns vacant land to erect fencing where it has been determined that they have been subject to rubbish dumping. Any councillor who is a member of Chaffey Ward would know that Butterfly Boulevard in Tarnit has been one area which has been heavily exposed by this issue. Vacant property owners that have not fenced their properties and have therefore been a hotspot in terms of frequent and often rubbish dumping. We've seen multiple Star Weekly news articles about this. This has been a continuing issue in urban areas of our city. Well, let's solve it. Let's solve it. Let's get on with it and consider giving council the power to be able to require a property owner to fence their property to essentially change the behaviours as best we can as part of a toolkit to combat the scourge of rubbish dumping. So that's what this proposal does, Madam Mayor. It ensures that we are able to consider whether or not we want to ultimately have the power to compel a property owner to do this. And I note that there are other councils that have this power in place. And I would encourage this council to adopt this as part of the toolkit to try and tackle rubbish dumping, particularly across our city. An important issue. Back to basics. Let's get the basics right first. In terms of that and the point that's been made more broadly this evening, we've spoken a lot about livability. What is it like to actually live in our homes, more so due to COVID-19 than ever before? And there are so many people that talk about the constant neglect of some, you know, small number of households in terms of maintaining their nature strips. We're not going to enact behavioural change just by education. We have to put an enforcement component to this problem. That is exactly what I am proposing. The city of Whittlesey has introduced a fine for unkept lawns for both a property occupier and a property owner. They are distinct. It may be that someone owns the property, but someone is ultimately living in it. And it is important to have that distinction in our local laws. And it's also important to be able to enforce this, to have a conversation with our community, to talk about what it is to be a good citizen and good neighbour. To make sure that if we are prepared to put in place these measures with education first, but enforcement ultimately as part of the toolkit, we'll start to see a better and more improved neighbourhood. And that is exactly what these two proposals are designed to do. And that is what this report would ultimately provide to us at the next OCM, if indeed it's endorsed this evening. I've no doubt that this will be overwhelmingly one way or the other. There will be people that either love this approach or they simply hate it. But I think at the end of the day, if you mow your lawn, it doesn't impact you. If you put a fence up on your vacant property because you are victim to rubbish dumping, doesn't impact you either. But if you don't do these things, if you don't maintain your front lawn and if you don't put in place steps to try and prohibit rubbish dumping on your property, then I don't see what other opportunities are available to us as a council to act in the best interest of the community in terms of improving the livability and amenity of our neighbourhoods and of our streets. So that is why I think it is important to go down this pathway. That's why I propose and wholeheartedly endorse, obviously, this notice of motion and enable council officers to do their due diligence in terms of providing that to us at the main meeting. And just finally, Madam Mayor, adopting this tonight, I take the point that councillor Maynard said. You know, we go out and we consult community, we consult people. Of course, we will certainly do that on this issue as well because there are requirements under the Local Government Act in the case of a local law-proposed amendment to do so. This will be a thorough process that will be undertaken under the provisions of the Local Government Act. Nevertheless, if we don't propose and proceed with this, it won't happen. And that's why I've put it tonight. And that's why I'm asking people to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm supporting it because we're actually going to get a report presented to us by Tuesday, the 25th of May to consider. I'm actually in two minds around the enforcement for non-maintained nature strips. Don't get me wrong. I think it is an important obligation that we in the community need to undertake. I think there are some people in our community that will, that do struggle in maintaining their nature strips for a whole variety of reasons, which I'm not going to go into tonight. So I would be looking at that as well as looking at the report, you know, to make that decision around that. I did raise nature strips as an issue last term, actually. I got a bit of criticism for it, I seem to remember. A few people told me I should stay on more strategic items, but I actually do think that it is an issue that is of concern to a number of people in our community. I certainly do think that vacant land does need a fence to try and stop rubbish dumping. But we know it just doesn't happen in vacant land. It happens in a lot of other places as well. But I support the notice of motion tonight. I'm looking forward to getting the report and I'll be making an informed decision from there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Any other councillors? Councillor Marcus and then councillor Zatkowski?
When I first read it, I thought, hmm, this is going to be a really interesting one, you know, getting people to erect a fence on their land. What kind of offence is it going to be? Is it going to be more ugly than the rubbish? But I will support this, councillor Gilligan. The other thing that I'm really disappointed with is I put up that we had a beautiful, tidy street competition. I also put up that we have a litter competition for the kids to educate them. Nothing has happened in any of those instances. Now, I look out my window today, because I live on the main street, here's this wonderful man. He comes every week and picks up all the rubbish that the people throw down in the Werribee CBD. And he does this every week. So we do have wonderful people out there. Yes, trying to get them all... Wyndham has never looked so untidy and I feel really sad about it. We once were the garden city, going back, none of you would probably ever remember that because it was a long time ago. We were known as the garden city, but where have we fallen backwards? And we just need, again, we need to bring the people on board and educate them, educate the kids with the litter competition. Let's all get together and have the best tidy street. We've had tiny towns. I remember we went to Warrnambool and Wyndham won the tiny town competition. So it is possible. So thank you, councillor Gilligan, for putting this forward.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Zatkowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The appearance of nature strips and rubbish on vacant land is of great concern to our community and something that the council and the community need to collectively resolve. And of course, I support working with the community to address this issue. I ran my 2020 campaign on the platform of restoring civic pride and I'm heartbroken by the recent increase in illegal dumping and littering. People who are proud of where they live simply do not do this. I'm not convinced that this proposal will achieve the change it is intended to achieve, particularly as councillor Gilligan has not engaged in any data analysis, evidence gathering or more significantly, community consultation on this matter. Wielding a bigger stick will not change attitudes or behaviour. Developing and delivering regulation is a complex task that requires proper amount of time and resourcing. This motion does not allow sufficient time or give any consideration to the current resourcing of the council. Directing officers to reallocate resources from current works on a whim is poor governance. To expect a meaningful report in less than a month on a change, a law change is fanciful at best. The motion is merely creating policy on the run and with no respect for the many processes and multiple stakeholders, but, sorry, both within our council and the wider community who must also be consulted. Most importantly, council is scheduled to review its local laws next year through the proper process set out in the Local Government Act. It would be far more appropriate to raise this as part of that review. I urge councillor Gilligan to respect our community and engage with and listen to relevant stakeholders to bring about real change on this issue. I invite councillor Gilligan to attend any future environment portfolio meeting to help develop a real strategy to combat this concerning growing trend. I'm not supporting this motion, but I do look forward to supporting a future motion that genuinely, genuinely addresses this issue. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Zatkowski. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor McIntyre and then councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a number of other councillors have already said, the appearance of our community is very much a concern. There's many locations in Harrison Ward that also suffer the fate of rubbish dumping on vacant plots. Residents, especially in new estates, move in and they struggle with the impact of dumping on vacant plots around them. The presentation of a place impacts on so many elements, some very clearly visible, like house prices, to ones less obvious, like mental health. I look forward to seeing this report as to what can be accomplished by local law changers. We do need an all-encompassing approach, though, at all the elements involved. It shouldn't just be about enforcement, but about prevention and education too. And I don't just mean fencing high-risk areas. Campaigns around keeping the area beautiful, community connectivity and a real sense of pride in where you live are also important, as advocated and mentioned by councillor Marcus. I look forward to these initiatives happening so that we can truly deliver a community to be proud of. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, a bit like councillor Shaw, I was also in two minds when I read this motion. However, I will be supporting it tonight and I'll be supporting it because it calls for a report to consider the merits of change. So for me, I can live with that. And then I would like to see the report. I'm very interested in seeing what council officers come up with. I'm not generally in favour of penalising people or creating penalties. To me, that's a reactive approach and I much prefer proactive approaches like education campaigns that have been mentioned tonight. But certainly, it's a problem. I don't deny that. But I look forward to a report that can consider the merits of changing these laws and how we then approach them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Hill?
Well, I appreciate the intention of making Wyndham a cleaner place. I'm just a bit concerned about the reaction of the residents. Occasionally, I still receive community inquiries about who should be maintaining the nature strips. They said the rate payers already pay so much money compared to other neighbouring suburbs. Why council couldn't maintain the nature strips and why is the residents' responsibility? I'm just thinking, are we a big step ahead of residents? And second, we just recovered from lockdown. Things are hard. And do we really want to put more pressure on this and getting the residents to put up fences and stuff? And even though we do have a lot of residents complaining about the rubbish dumping. Thirdly, imagine a suburb full of fences. How depressing would that look? I feel like the way to deal with this is a continuous education campaign, clean-out days, et cetera. We want a suburb full of trees, not fences. So I will not be supporting this motion tonight. I'm sorry.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Any other councillors? Councillor Gilligan, as there have been speakers against, would you like to close the debate?
Yeah, thanks very much, Madam. I think there's been two trains of thought on this motion. Some that actually understand how this works, some that don't. I guess what I'll do is I'll talk to the comments I've heard about essentially talking to the motion. And you're right, I mean, this ultimately will be a report that considers the merits of whether or not these approaches can ultimately be adopted in the local laws. And how that would look can ultimately become the determination of council to go out, of course, through a consultation process in order to achieve that. I think, though, just on that same train of thought, if education was working, then why is it that it's still so prominent as a problem? And will the ability of enforcement in conjunction with education be the catalyst for change? That's really the part I think we need to turn our minds to. And we know this works in a behavioural economic sense, you know. Ben Chifley is a great example of that, the hip pocket nerve. If people think it's going to cost them, they'll change their ways. And that's really the argument that's been put in terms of looking at potential enforcement parameters around non-maintained nature strips. As councillor Rob pointed out, you know, all I would say to that commentary is perhaps to get an understanding of how local law change works, to get an understanding of the resolution itself. I mean, it's ultimately to bring a report, it's not to necessarily adopt this as a council position. And as part of this broader piece, as I've mentioned, making sure that we start to look at ways that we can have meaningful change, not just based on, you know, what we think we, you know, what we don't like or what we assume, you know, what we say might fail or we don't like it. Well, present alternatives and let's talk it through. And the final point I'd make is there's been quite a lot of officer commentary and work done behind the scenes. I always treat staff of the utmost respect. They are well aware of proposals weeks before they make it to broader council conversation. And that's to ensure there is an alignment around resourcing because that's how good operators work. If you want something to be achieved, you've got to respect the people that ultimately do the work behind the scenes to make it happen. And I'm very confident we have the resources in our staff to be able to do this. I'm very confident there's very little to none administrative burden that they would take on by ultimately putting this report. And I've thoroughly enjoyed the policy conversation that we've had internally to compare to other councils that have already, ahead of us, frankly, whether it's the city of Whittlesey that's already implementing this change and are used as a great example, I must say, to touch on councillor Barrera's point of tree canopy tonight. They're big winners around neighbourhood transformation, tree canopy, the better amenity of streets. These are things we're not doing. And I would put to councillors that if we do do this, will we see a better, more presentable streets and neighbourhoods? My answer to that is yes. And that's why I think it's absolutely worth us turning our minds to this local law reform and getting on with the job that we have been asked to do and get back to basics. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Gilligan. And councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. Thank you.
I'll call a division on that one, too.
Thank you. Councillors for the motion? Councillor Barrera, councillor Marcus, councillor Shaw, councillor Hegeditich, councillor Gilligan, councillor McIntyre and councillor Mufford. All those against? Councillor Maynard, councillor Zatkowski, councillor Ramesh and councillor Hill. Thank you.
Mine already blocked, Madam Mayor.
Didn't quite catch that, but we'll let it through to the keeper and we'll move on to 7.4. Motion of, notice of motion 605, Werribee South Forshore reports on pages 356 to 357 with the recommendation on 357. Councillor Shaw, you are the proposer of this motion, so I take it you'll be the mover? Thank you. And the motion is as tabled. Thank you. Councillor, are there any councillors seconding this motion? Councillor Mufford, councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
Yeah, I will. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So early last year, before the harsh impacts of COVID-19 pandemic reached Australia, we went out to the community and asked them to have their say on a five-year plan that mapped out the future of one of our greatest assets, our coastline. We received so much great feedback, which helped shape our coastal and marine management plan. The beauty of this plan is that it was created in partnership with our community. As part of our engagement, we asked both residents and visitors what they love most about our coast here in Wyndham and what they would like to see and what they use most. The coastal marine management plan outlined a range of actions for the five years to follow. It was then and still is today a very important plan for one of our city's most beautiful, most valuable assets. And then, Madam Mayor, COVID-19 did reach us. And while the coast and our open spaces were important to us pre-pandemic, our community fell even more in love with our outdoor spaces when lockdown was implemented. I also want to put on the record, Madam Mayor, that what I'm putting forward tonight is completely in line with budget. I'm not asking for more money. It's simply bringing forward works we've already committed to as part of our endorsed coastal and marine management plan. And in my election campaign last year, one of my election promises was to ensure that we did put the appropriate council management and investment into the Werribee Forshore. Over the last 10 years, these are the only major projects that we have undertaken at the Werribee South Forshore. Boat ramp improvement, $650,000 in 2011. Boardwalk improvement, $515,000 in 2011. Boardwalk improvement, five hundred and fifteen thousand in two thousand and eleven. Shared pathway construction improvements, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand in two thousand and fourteen. Footpath improvements, seventy-one thousand in two thousand and sixteen. And the price reserve play space upgrade, two hundred thousand in two thousand and seventeen. So I seek the support of you, my fellow councillors, in bringing forward surfacing and formalisation of the foreshore car park extension. Bringing forward the development of the Warraby South master plan from financial year twenty-three, twenty-four, with community consultation to occur in financial year twenty-one, twenty-two. The general asset renewal programme for minor infrastructure. Seats, small unsealed car parks, benches, landscaping for coastline from Warraby South to Wyndham Harbour. And the development of the Wyndham Harbour to Bailey's Beach master plan to commence in twenty-two, twenty-three. But we can't do this alone. Central to my notice of motion this evening is calling on the state government to support us in two key pieces of infrastructure to see the potential of our coast realised. In recent years, we have seen the state contribute funding towards projects along the coast for our neighbours in Hobson's Bay. While this is completely needed over there, we're also in need of our support. For Warraby South, the state government, through Better Boating Victoria, currently provides funding of approximately one hundred and ten thousand dollars per year for council to maintain and clean the boat ramp facility and not charge fees to boat ramp users. It has also provided one point five million to the K Roads Cliffs master plan, noting that this is not the foreshore, however, given the proximity, I did include it. The state government has contributed nearly four point five million dollars towards foreshore investigations, design development and construction programmes to Hobson's, projects to Hobson's Bay between two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, to two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. I ask, I seek my councillor colleague's support in advocating to the state government to deliver construction of a shared path connection on crown land managed by, managed by Delp between K Road Cliffs and Warraby South on the eastern side of the Warraby River, connecting the Warraby Tourism Precinct to the coastline. And funding construction of a boardwalk connection from Point Cook Coastal Park to Sanctuary Lakes and the City of Hobson's Bay Trail, identified in the Future Directions Plan developed by Parks Victoria, dated two thousand and five. Madam Mayor, for too long, our coastline has been neglected and without a rapid rise in attention and upgrade, we'll continue to play catch-up on this important asset for our current and future populations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. Councillors, do I have any other speakers on this item? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor. I agree with most of the dot points on this notice of motion and I've actually included three of those in my budget submission, um, for what the market gardeners and the Warraby South people have asked. But I did ask if we could defer this notice of motion because of point two. Construction of a shared path connection on crown land managed by Delp between the K Road Cliffs and Warraby South on the eastern side of the Warraby River. I am speaking on this item because I was the councillor, who was the representative on the Bayside Coastal Strategy Committee, which went for four years. We had meeting with the irrigation farmers on several occasions and they raised the following concerns, which you will find on page seventy-six. Concerns were expressed by the farmers regarding the ability for the two land uses to coexist, including public health risk of spraying pesticides, use of recycled water and fertilisers. Bringing in people into the area increases security issues, including break-ins and increased stolen produce from the farm. And we already have evidence that this is what is happening. Not only that, the pathway that is in there now on one section, they let their dogs run in amongst the tractors, in amongst the workers where they're cutting lettuces. And this far, these farmers are getting extremely stressed because they cannot farm properly. So these are some of the issues that we need to look at. Also, we must recognise the importance of supporting the farmers and the green wedge. They are stuck, they cannot sell out, it must remain the food bowl. So we cannot afford to be putting footpaths in without more consultation with the farmers to see how the two can work together. Only last week, I had a phone call, Heather, quick, come to Warraby South. There's a family down here have thrown all their rubbish in our farm, but furthermore, have stolen our cauliflowers. But he went and he said, put it back, you've broken two laws. Put it back and pick up your rubbish and take it away. This is what is happening. So this is why I would like this deferred, so that we can talk to the market gardeners to see how best we can put a footpath. Now, the footpath that, uh, Councillor Shaw has mentioned goes down along the river. Farmers, uh, of farming right there, they also tell me that it is infested with tiger snakes. And I don't know whether any of you are on council, but we held our Christmas celebration, of New Year's celebrations on the foreshore of Warraby South. We had to get out of there because of the tiger snakes. So these are some of the issues that the market gardeners are very concerned about. And I would like it deferred until we can have better consultation with the market gardeners to see how they're going to spray their land when they've got people walking past it and having their produce stolen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting Councillor Shaw's notice of motion this evening after seeking clarification of any potential negative impact on Harrison Ward and was reassured. I do agree our coastline is very much a hidden asset and one that we do need to promote more and to develop to achieve necessary goals. Some Warraby South residents live on the coast, as do many Point Cook residents. In the lockdown, it made us appreciate more just what there is available. This resource shouldn't go to waste. We heard as part of the deliberative community engagement just how important our environment is and open spaces. We do need the state to help to deliver their side of the bargain, including the necessary connecting factors like the shared path connection and the boardwalk connection between Point Cook Coastal Park and Sanctuary Lakes to the Hobson's Bay Trail. In the Point Cook area, there is a low amount of open space according to the council strategic documents and we need to take all the opportunities we can to help achieve the best outcomes for the whole of our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Anyone else? Councillor Zakowski?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few brief words. Uh, so, I, I just want to say, I, I've noticed tonight, there's been, um, a lot of interest from councillors on areas that cover my portfolio and, um, I'm very, very pleased with that. Uh, means that, um, there's a good chance that I will achieve a great many things over the four years, knowing how many people are supportive. Um, this too is another area that covers my portfolio, it's the coastal management plan. Um, it's a plan that is long overdue in Wyndham. Um, it's been a long time coming and is, um, a, a, a central part, uh, essentially of the resilient strategy as, as it is. So, um, any, any motion, um, or should I say this motion being, um, bringing forward any work that, that contributes to that substantive plan, uh, I'm definitely in favour of. Um, uh, and I will be supporting this motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zakowski. Any other councillors? Councillor Mafud?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try and be extremely brief also. Um, I'd like to thank Councillor Shaw first for bringing this to our attention. I don't think we'd speak about the coast enough. When we look at our tagline, city coast country, and with twenty-seven kilometres of coastline, it's not something we, we discuss enough. And I think possibly the first thing that since this new councillors has, has been brought to the table. So I think with that twenty-seven kilometres of coastline, we need to protect it. We need to appreciate it and to appreciate it, we need to bring the amenities up to standard. So these, as Councillor Shaw highlighted, these are, um, particular infrastructure items that are within, uh, are in the coastal management plan. They may have been brought forward and some of the other things, um, this is shared pathway. I think will just go a long way for residents being able to appreciate the coastline and get out there and enjoy it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mafud. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I now put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillors for this motion. Councillor Barrera, Councillor Maynard, Councillor Zakowski, Councillor Shaw, Councillor Hegeditich, Councillor Ramesh, Councillor Hill, Councillor Gilligan, Councillor McIntyre and Councillor Mafud. Against? Councillor Marcus. Thank you. Item seven point five, notice of motion six oh six. Safety improvements for the Sneed's Point Cook Road intersection, reports on pages three fifty-eight to three fifty-nine. Recommendations on three fifty-nine. Councillor Ramesh is the mover of this motion. I take it you're moving the, uh, so as the proposer of this motion, you'll move the motion as well?
Yes.
Excellent, and the motion is as put in the report. Councillors, do I have a second? Councillor McIntyre? Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the intersection of Point Cook Road and Sneed's Road is a known high-risk zone, um, with near misses occurring routinely. As we're all aware, concerns over the safety of this intersection are routinely highlighted by the residents and by council to the state government, which has resulted in funding by the state, um, allocated in May last year for their contribution to an upgrade to this intersection. Timing for the upgrade is yet to be announced and until the upgrade commences, many of our residents use the intersection, including many of us present tonight in this chamber. Further, return to work from COVID-19 lockdown and the ongoing population growth south of this intersection continues to elevate the risks to human safety with each passing day. At this intersection, as this intersection is managed by the State Department of Transport, I understand the risk mitigation actions available to council are constrained. But it remains prudent, however, for council to assess potential actions in its power to minimise and mitigate the existing risk until such time as the state commences the upgrade. Personal safety is of utmost priority to me and I'm sure it would be the same for my fellow councillors. I seek your support tonight in favour of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Ramesh. Any councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think we talked a lot about, you know, notices of motion on the run and it was good to see that Councillor Ramesh did amend her notice, um, after understanding how the Audit and Risk Committee actually functions. So I just thought I'd point that out for the purposes of the, the resolution. I certainly do support the resolution, uh, but do make the point about notices of motion and whether they're ultimately useless or useful. Uh, in this instance, this largely pertains to a state issue, which is most of the way through. I again commend Councillor Mcilhoney for her advocacy as the former Harrison Ward councillor. We did some great work in ultimately getting funding for this intersection with staff. Uh, and all of this is already underway. We've got emails about this from, uh, council officers, keeping us regularly briefed. I've no idea why we're actually putting this in a chamber context. Uh, so if we want to talk about on the run, and this is probably a good emblematic example of useless versus useful, uh, in terms of notices of motion. But again, I'll vote for it purely on the merits itself, it's a good issue. But what does it achieve? Nothing. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everyone in our community knows just how dangerous this intersection is. Our community is having to find alternative ways in order, especially to avoid turning right from Sneed's Road onto Point Cook Road, causing extra volume on local roads as people try and find a safe way to go home. Our local roads have sadly seen many fatalities and without this work being completed, it's not a question of if, but when they happen there. We have community groups like Point Cook Action Group that have campaigned for years to help deliver that result. And as, um, Councillor Gilligan has pointed out also, and Councillor Kim Mcilhoney, councillor, um, and all the other councillors that have been involved in bringing this to the pool. Despite the fact that the signalisation and widening of this intersection was funded in November, very few people still know about it and still no work has actually started there. I believe the council has completed the plans with the Department of Transport and this project is now shovel-ready. We know that traffic volumes are now back to pre-COVID levels, so we need no more delay. We need action and we need it now from the state government. They recognise the problem and finance the solution. We now need them to deliver it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? If not, I put the item to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item six point, uh, seven point six has been deferred. Item eight is counsel silver and nil. Item nine, questions with notice from the public gallery. Madam acting CEO, are there any public questions this evening?
I have three, Madam Mayor, no questions this evening.
Thank you very much. Item ten is urgent business, there is nil. Item eleven is confidential business. Councillors, can I have a mover to close the meeting to the public in order for council to consider confidential business? Councillor Maynard, do I have a second? Uh, Councillor Maynard, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The pursuant to section sixty, sixty-six one and two A of Local Government Act two thousand and twenty, this meeting of council be closed to members of the public in order for council to discuss confidential matters.
Councillors, do I have a second to that motion? Councillor Hill? Councillors, all those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Thank you, I ask the meeting now be closed. Thank you, councillors. Um, for that, I now move to item twelve of the agenda, which is close the meeting and I declare the meeting closed at nine forty-nine PM. Thank you very much, councillors.